Thank you all for being here. The Essex Board of Selectmen meeting, calling to order at 6:01 PM. Just a reminder, this meeting is being broadcasted and recorded. And our first appointment is currently now, which is the Memorial Park Tennis Court Project Update.
Hi. Do you want us to sign in again?
Yes, please.
Have you not seen these yet? Is that why they're unsigned?
Oh, I didn't see those yet.
I'll let you go through them first.
And then just speak, as you know, about six to eight inches from the mic.
Okay, is that right?
That's perfect. And state your name and then your address.
Sarah Willworth-Dyer, 9 Indian Rock Lane in Essex. Good evening to you all. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to continue with our efforts to restore the Memorial Park tennis courts. We are here to answer any of the questions that you may have on the material that we sent you, that you asked for after the last meeting. But as noted in the briefing material, the purpose of our meeting with you tonight is to seek your support in advancing the project. And as you know, the DPW already consented to our efforts to undertake the tennis court restoration efforts. And as we described previously, we see this as a long-term project which is being undertaken as a public-private collaboration between the town through its commitment of CPC funds and private funding from the Friends of Memorial Park Improvement Project. And I'll just add that Marty Flood is here tonight from Friends of Memorial Park, and he can speak to that. We're grateful to have representatives from both the Friends of Memorial Park Improvement Project and the Community Preservation Committee. Michelle French is here tonight for that. And they're here and that they're supporting the effort and to answer any questions you might have regarding their involvement in this effort. These two organizations have helped provide the seed money to tackle the first phase of the project. And of course, the critical first step in this effort is to undertake the design, engineering, and permitting of the project. And we have been fortunate to have a contract proposal to do that work from Weston Sampson, who have extensive experience with this type of projects. And we forwarded you those documents. Just as importantly, the Friends of Memorial Park Improvement Project have expressed some support in using the remaining funds that they are holding for this effort. And as this initial step, and I did check with Brenda today, the design and engineering phase would not require a public bidding process. And so we could have that coordinated between the town and the consultant directly. So to that end, we're seeking the concurrence of the board of selectmen to provide the important assistance of the town administrator in this effort. Provided that the private funds are conveyed to the town, the town administrator could then oversee the contract administration. Also, at least as importantly, given the outstanding results of Marty Flood's group, the Friends of Memorial Park Improvement Project, in their ballpark restoration efforts, we feel that it's only fitting that the remaining funds be dedicated to finishing off the project. Whoops. All good? Okay. To make this the last piece of the park restoration.
I'm sorry, can you go back to that? What do you mean by that? What baseball baba? Was that part of your...
So Friends of Memorial Park Improvement Project is the group that was responsible for the baseball park, restoring the baseball diamond behind here and also the Annie Gosby So just briefly anticipating a timeline, if we get the okay tonight, we would like to see the design...
...all done by the group.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We'd like to see, we would like to be able to go ahead with the design and engineering And then we would go, we would present to the Community Preservation Commission to see how they would be willing to help us fund the project. We are also still anticipating going for state grants that would, we could potentially gain access to at Fall Town Meeting of 2026, which would allow us to go to construction in July of 2027. Get all that?
Yeah.
Yep. So basically, tonight, we're looking for your okay to go ahead with the next phase of the project.
So I've done some pros and cons on all the different aspects. I'm a little bit concerned. This project from early days was always a public resident focus. It was not involving the town, although the town administrator would always look over contracts to make sure that it doesn't put us in a bad light. I don't know that taking on the project, but I'm going to let the other two selectmen voice their concerns also.
Yeah, I mean, that was my understanding. Quick question aside, I've seen a few places that the 444 is a high number. Do you have a, and it keeps referring to the fact that this is a high number and there is other, what is the actual number that you're thinking?
We don't have an actual number because we'd have to go through the public bidding process once we get the design and engineering done. It's my understanding, you have to go then and get a number of bids. So we did have Kim Drake look at that initial quote. She thought there was a good 60,000 to 70,000 that could be cut out of that. There are things in that quote that we wouldn't necessarily want or need, like screening and park benches and other things that, you know, there's a lot of fluffy stuff in there and there's a high contingency number. So there are things that we are just unknowns right now that make it, that push it up against the higher end.
Okay. So are you thinking that the town would contribute more funding to the project than what the CPC has already committed?
That's our hope, that we could go back to the CPC. There are funds in the, that are reserved for open space that we would like to tap into.
Okay.
And the state grant that we're looking at is upwards of 100,000.
Right.
And I'm just gonna, Annie, why don't you give your viewpoint and then I'll move on?
Sure, I have some questions, if that's okay.
Can you talk a little closer, because I can...
Administration of the project, you said the town administrator, but is that the purview of the DPW? Is that the purview of the DPW? And I guess I'm just wondering about the, you know, who's in charge of what and why would, you know, can they handle the project? I do think that this is a public project that I think we thought would be privately funded, and we've had some limitations on that. But going to the CPC is reasonable. I think there's money in the CPC. If we could actually have Michelle speak to how much money is there, it looked significant to me. So if we could kind of look at the numbers about what we have so far, what's in the donation bucket, what's the possibility of the CPC?
So before you do, make sure that you sign and that, what agenda item you're talking about, just so that we make sure that we document this properly.
Yeah, so, well, sure. So while they're signing in, because this would be a town-administered project and it's over $50,000, it's our understanding, well, at least we heard from the DPW, that it would have to be overseen by the board of selectmen or town administrator, I guess is more appropriate.
So that's correct. Under the town's procurement bylaw, the DPW has contracting authority up to 50,000 unless it's water, the water department. They have unlimited contracting authority under the special act that created the Board of Public Works. And above the DPW threshold, because of course, this would not be a water department project, the selectman would have to sign the contract with the engineer for the design and then eventually with the contractor. So that is correct.
Excuse me, Mike Strowman, 17 Maple Street. Brenda, to your point about, I'm trying to clarify this relationship between the DPW and the board of selectmen oversight and all that. As you know, we've been before the DPW a number of times. They've endorsed our efforts. And to your point of the $50,000 limit for them, it sounds like, according to your interpretation, they could administer a contract under that amount. However, you know, we've talked to Mike Alley, he said, well, he'd prefer we run it through the board of selectmen and get your support in the form of the town, the board of selectmen accepting the money and having to grant the contract administered through the town administrator. So that's where things stand and...
Yeah, so the Board of Public Works has jurisdiction as park commissioners over this area, Memorial Park. If they determine that they would want to allow the board of selectmen to come in and run the project, they're allowed to do that. What the selectmen can't do is say, this project is going to happen in the park without at least getting agreement from the Board of Public Works. If they say, yes, go ahead and please go ahead and run the project, then there's no conflict with that. The selectmen certainly could. Another reason why it might be good for, if it's going to go in this direction, for the selectmen to run the project is that eventually, we're talking about a major construction project in the hundreds of thousands of dollars and we're talking about a grant that the Board of Public Works cannot sign off on. So it might make sense to unify this, so long as the Board of Public Works kind of cedes their authority in this particular matter for the board of selectmen and the town administrator to manage all the aspects of it, whether it be a grant, a design, a construction contract, whatever have you. But again, it's up to the selectmen as to whether they want to put those gears in motion.
And that's where my concern is, is because we know that from historical, there may, or there is, yaki durete. And what does, I mean, this 400,000 could end up being 600,000 or higher.
If you did encounter as part of the project, and nobody can guarantee whether you will or you won't for sure, if you did encounter that stuff, it would be a lot higher, and that's the concern.
We have every indication from the engineer and others that there would be no disturbance of the subsurface here. It'd be simply grinding the existing asphalt there, blending it with the base stone to go in for the new court, and there'd be no intention to disturb below that area.
Okay, I thought that the thing was going to be raising it a foot.
Well, they could raise, the proposal is eight inches of crushed stone and four inches of new asphalt on top of what's there.
On top of the current asphalt that's out there.
Basically, once the asphalt's ground up into that...
So if they're not going to go below the asphalt cap, then there's virtually no chance of encountering subsurface contamination.
Okay. So I'll let the CPC give their information.
Michelle French, 64 Forest Ave. So unfortunately, I don't have the numbers that are requested. I've tried, I've tried a few times with the town accountant, and I do not have the exact numbers, but I do know we have money available to give out to projects. I don't know if that helps or not, but we're having a meeting on Wednesday night at 5:00 here, and the tennis courts is on the agenda.
Yeah, I could say that, you know, there's already 50,000 that's been appropriated. If you got a $100,000 grant and the thing costs 450, that's 300,000 in community preservation funding, and that money is there, I can tell you that, at least that much.
Yeah, I thought so, but I wanted exact figures and I don't have them.
Can you spend the, all that 300, or do you have to save some for other categories in the CPC?
The way the Community Preservation Act works is you put that money aside as it gets taken in by the town. And so every year, 10% gets put aside for that purpose, and then 10% for affordable housing and 10% for historic preservation. 70% goes into an undesignated fund balance. That 70% is, you know, it has been tapped, but between what is still in the open space appropriate, the open space account and what's in the undesignated fund balance, I can tell you there's at least $300,000 there.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Michelle, can I speak to that? Excuse me, I don't mean to take your time, Michelle, but I just wanted, I do have some rough numbers I received from the town accountant some time ago, probably a month or so ago. And I know these aren't accurate and they're probably not up to date, but as I read this, following the release of the commitment of 50,000 already, there is still a balance in the open space allotment there in the amount of $119,000. And that's so, that's seeing there apparently. In total, aside from open space, historic, you know, resources and other resources committed to housing, there's an undesignated fund balance, according to the county's numbers, of $737,000. So that's the numbers I got from the town. I know they're probably a little outdated or not.
Yeah, this is adequate money. If this thing really is 450, now, mind you, it's probably two years away, so who knows what it will be by then, but there's enough, and there's more community preservation money is going to come in. The process, though, comes down to, A, the selectmen saying that they want to support it and move toward it if they do, B, the Community Preservation Committee taking it up and making a recommendation to town meeting, and C, town meeting actually voting the appropriation. So there's multiple steps. And tonight, it's up to the selectmen to determine whether they want to get more information, discuss it tonight, and come up with some kind of conclusion or whatever it is. It's open.
I have a question on Task 3 in the design. Is that to do the actual permitting, or is that to determine what needs to be done for permitting? $14,000?
It's 14,500. I think that was the permits themselves.
That's the permits themselves, okay.
Yeah, Task 3 of their proposal is permitting services.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess I'm still stuck on the fact that, is this a project that the town wants to take ownership of, or is this a project that it still should be the public that takes ownership, meaning they do it all? Help me understand that aspect. And I'm saying this from historical, I was here when they first projects started, singing to myself, that it had always been said, a public group is going to put together the funds and pay for this to get done. So I'm still at a little, a bit of a loss that now...
So it can be done either way, right? So Marty's group did the Annie Gosby field, and all of the nice things that came with that. They raised money privately, they did the work without the town contracting the work, and they turned the whole thing over as a gift to the town. That could be done with the tennis courts. Or, as the people are approaching you now, the town could begin to take it on. You could go into a design phase and get that part done even now, because there's, well, there's 50 there. Yeah, and as long as we got enough of the additional money from the private funding, you could do that. But you have no certainty as to whether, at this point, the Community Preservation Committee will support it or whether town meeting will support what is going to be needed, because ultimately, you're going to need more than the existing appropriation and a grant.
And any comments from the...
Yeah, I mean, I think we've been waiting for courts there for a long time, so thanks for doing the work. I think that people want to have courts down there. That's where all of, everybody pours down from the town into the park. And we have a beautiful baseball field. It'd be great if we had some softball fields that worked back there. But, you know, this is part of developing a community asset, and I'm in support of it, and thanks for all the work that you did in getting the field together. But I'm in support of this and I, in terms of the design work, which is, I think, what you'd like to have approval of immediately, is I'm in support of that.
And just a footnote, sorry, the 49,000 is for materials, so we would have to take the entire design amount from the private funding. And is there enough in the private fund right now to pay for that?
I can speak to that. Oh, you can speak to it. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Marty Flood from, the president of Friends of Memorial Park Improvement Project since 2018. Our group is holding about $56,000 of money that was raised in the last five years for the tennis courts. We certainly did a nice job with the Annie Gosby's field and the veterans patio. Don't forget, it's probably the most beautiful baseball area in all of the Cape Anne area. I've been to all of them for the last 15 years, and we love it there, and we appreciate the town of Essex allowing us to do this years ago. For those that didn't know, we raised well over $100,000 and got free construction that would have cost triple that to do all of the work, because of the flooding over there and turning over things. It was a massive job, and we have pictures galore, and we're going to put together a book as soon as we get the time and donate one here to the town of Essex. When Mike Alley asked us to step in and handle the money that was being raised by Jody Harris four or five years ago, I was glad to do it. But we have been holding money for four or five years for this. And I can tell you, I know that at the time, it was to raise money, but there is no more money coming in. There is no active, as a matter of fact, no one is giving money for anything to do with the tennis courts until it's resolved and moved forward. I don't think it's possible to raise that money privately, and why we're here tonight is to get you to change your mind and do this a public project and have the town of Essex handle and take over and pay for the tennis courts. It's been four or five years. In saying that, we're holding enough money, I think, to do the design for the engineering plans. To me, there's no guarantee that it'll set there and be done. $400,000, when I saw that, I was like doing backflips. The original quote was 120, it went to 180, I think, in 2022, just because of the fuel prices. I don't know how that number got so high. It's basically pulverizing the ground and then adding on top, making a, basically a highway with some nice fencing. I don't think the numbers are going to be anywhere near that, but that's my personal opinion. I would say this group, this new group that's come forward, has been the, really the only group that's really done anything in the last couple of years, who I stand with, and I trust them. And so to finish, we are shutting down the Friends of Memorial Park Improvement Project. We have done everything we can over there since 2018, okay? My kids are all grown, all of our members are, we only have five left of eight. We lost Jim McKenna last year, who was our treasurer and our attorney for the group. And we've all decided that we'd like to donate this money to the town of Essex for you to put aside with some guarantees in writing, so we can put that in our records for the state attorney general's office that monitors the nonprofits. And you guys can spend it, or these guys can spend that money to start doing the engineering plans now. I only learned about the engineering plans, that it was a prerequisite. I guess something happened at other places around town, including Whole Foods, that are kind of sinking in the ground. But I've been here 17 years, and I think things pretty hard over there. I think it's going to be okay. I don't think it's that much of a gamble.
We know that there's been flooding. We have...
Flooding is one thing, but it's going to be raised, and there's nothing you can do about the flooding. Nothing's going to change with that. It's basically going to get wet and dry out. The next day, I've seen floods down here. I've stood there with kids wanting to play baseball. So what I wanted to do tonight is just say, we would just like, from you, for the town, Beesee or your town council, a letter saying, we will handle, take the money, handle our money, those funds, and accept it as a gift in the near future, when you decide to, and so we can wipe our hands clean from this. We've done, this is going on five years of holding money that's not ours to hold any longer.
I think before we do that, we might want to see the design plan. And the reason I was asking about the permitting is maybe that's not necessary in that phase, but just to see the official schematic design and the design, so we get, there's a better handle on what it is actually going to cost. I mean, we're looking at now 180 to 450, something like that. And that's something that you guys have funding available for, and if you cut out the 14,5, maybe that makes it a little bit more palatable. And then go from there, it makes it a better sell for the CPC, for the town, and I think for the board of selectmen.
Yeah, I mean, because I've done the pros and cons about, yes, this is a lovely place to have tennis courts, but it's also a lovely place to have more parking, because we don't have enough parking in order to, for business, for people to come here and go to the businesses. So I'd like to, I'd like to have an...
Can I speak to that point, please? I understand that that has come up as an issue recently about parking, and I'm not exactly sure where that issue arose from. There's currently 100 parking spaces down there, 90 already marked, including plenty for the double trailer and cars. There's unmarked parking spaces available at the park. And on top of all this, well, let me step back. Peter, to your point, the proposal provided by Weston Sampson will cover permitting, design, and engineering within, for $50,000. There's $56,000 being offered to the town, so that's covered. And that will get us to the point where we have conceptual plans for town meeting down the road. To the point of parking, that constitutes a change of use of that property, and this property is a public recreation dedicated, held by a public entity, and subject to Article 97 of the state constitution. And as we, probably some of us know, that there are massive hurdles to attend to in order to change that use from a tennis court to a parking lot. And that would include a town meeting vote, two-thirds vote to do that, as well as vote, two-thirds vote of the state legislature to change that use. And on top of that, under the open space law that was passed about four years ago, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs has created a policy in which they will review any kind of proposed change of use from something that's dedicated to environmental or recreational use. And a parking lot would certainly trigger those types of reviews, and that could take a number of years.
I'm going to have to point to Beesee, because I...
Well, that would, that would depend on whether the reviewing authorities saw parking for the park itself, expansion of parking, as to be a use that would be pertinent to the park. So I don't know, we don't have a legal opinion on that.
I understand the parking is designed to service the business community, not the park.
It's both.
It could be, the parking, if parking's allowed on the tennis courts, at least temporarily, it could be construed as something that's allowing people who come to games and use the park. I don't know, I don't have a legal opinion on that. I understand Article 97 and what you're bringing up. I don't know for sure whether a change that is taking down old fencing and temporarily allowing parking is something that would be stopped at. Maybe you're right, but we haven't gotten to that point of reviewing that yet.
I'd just like to end this by saying, we've got the money to do the engineering and design and permitting. And you guys are asking a lot of good questions that we'll be able to answer better once we have this work done by Weston Sampson. So I really encourage you to make a decision tonight to go ahead with at least this phase of the project.
I think I support that phase.
So I can support the phase? I think we'd have to come back with the information, because again, I'm a little bit, I don't want the town to take on a project. It was, it wasn't a town project. Let's see what we're looking at and how long it's going to take, and then maybe. The other thing is, is as far as the state grants, I'm concerned about grants as far as, what does that, does that mean that it's open to everybody? Does that mean that Essex residents, you know, don't have precedence?
I think it would be open to everybody, yes.
Can I, Annie?
Can I ask you a question? When you say...
When you say you don't want the town to take it on, do you?
I don't want the town to take on the project management of the project and the funding and the, all of that. That, that was a, again, it was a public request. You know, the tennis courts, they were going to be handled by a public group. And now this would mean that our town administrator would have to take on a new project to handle that.
So it's not about the CPC funds?
It, well, you have to handle the funds. Who's going to make sure that the zero, you know, the amount that comes in is the amount that goes out, that type of thing? Or we go over, the budget goes over, and how do we handle that? That's what my concern is, is that having us do all of the management of it is a little bit scary to me.
Well, let's get, let's get the study done first and then we know what we're looking at and we can talk about these questions.
So do I have to make a motion?
Can I ask one more question?
I'm not sure what's being proposed yet, but go ahead.
Can I ask you?
Of course.
Can you tell me, is, would this be onerous for you to have to manage?
No. I manage projects all the time.
I know.
I've managed a lot bigger than this.
I don't want to just assume. I want you to.
No, will it be more work? Yeah, but that's why I'm here, right?
And it all depends on how big the project is going to be. I don't want you selling yourself short. We've got a lot of projects coming up. That it's very important to me that we have the resources to do the work.
That's what I wanted to ask.
If the question is, can I handle the project? Yes, I can.
And yet, I would also say, Mike and I aren't going anywhere. And if we can be of assistance in that administration part, I'm certainly happy to do that.
The question though is, Peter, I think, are you suggesting that the private group go out and use their funds to get through a few phase, few tasks in this design and not have the town do the design contract?
At this, at this point, yes. And then, then we have something to, to look at.
So for the board, does, does the board?
Or CPC money, or that, that can't be spent on this.
No.
Can't be.
But the money that you've fundraised for can be.
Yes. So you're saying have this group take care of the design and permitting phase? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I thought you were proposing.
Because you can do that for less than the money you have. Contract documents you could just hold off on until we have, you know, because you could get to design and permitting and then get a new construction cost estimate at that point in time, all within the funds that you currently have, unless the board wants to take it on and the town would do that.
They, they gave, I'm not sure if you know, they gave us a revised number of $55,000. Marty says he's got $56,000.
All right, we had one from you that said 67.5. Then we got a new one from you that says 60. We don't have one that says 55. But what I'm saying is, you could start with task one, schematic design 16. Task two, design development.
I'm sorry, the 67.5, you back off the construction administration part and you got 55,000.
Yeah.
So is the motion that you adhere tasks one through four or tasks?
Yeah, tasks one through four.
So I move that we accept the design task or phase portion of the design.
Can I change that a little bit? Because my feeling is the motion should be to allow the private tennis court group to go after the permitting and design of task one through four.
So moved, or second.
Can I say something? We, we have $56,250. That's it. There's not going to be any more money coming in. There is no fundraising going on. That ended years and years ago. We are willing, if my board votes for it after this meeting, to pay for that engineering cost up to $56,250. Then we're out. If they allow that. My wish was to donate the money to the town and have you pay for that. The reason I say that is, there was a lot of people that gave money for the tennis courts. They didn't pay for engineering costs when they gave the money. One pre-attrition's group gave 30. We're talking a lot of the nice nonprofits in town, in both towns that give money for this, and a lot of other people that have given lots of money. It's going to be hard to tell them, well, we're not doing the tennis courts. We're taking a chance and doing the engineering and let's see what happens. I think I can do it with some public, in, in the newspaper and advertise this on the Facebook pages, which seems to work in both towns. But we have to let those people know that gave money, that the money is going into this engineering now. It just, this engineering thing is new, right? So I just want you to know that if you vote for this, that we're going, I am going to propose to do this and pay for this and then move forward. But I really beg of you that you will reconsider and your town pays for this ultimately down the road. It's been five years. We failed to raise the money. There's no one coming forward.
And that's where my concern is also. Because if you took all 3,600 residents, would every one of the 3,600 residents want a tennis court there? I think that we need to be able to say, here's what it's going to cost. It's not that much. Let's, let's go for it. But if we don't have something to stand up at town meeting, then it's going to fail and then you're not going to have anything done.
Okay, so we're, I'll take it back to my board. You guys move forward and we'll, I will, will consider what you're doing, accepting the, the engineering plans after they're done. And that'll be, I, I don't know what the engineering plans ultimately are going to say. Are they going to say, yes, you can put tennis courts on top of the tennis courts? I think it's going to say that. I don't, I can't imagine.
If the engineering plans come back saying you have to grind it, then we're probably going to say, no, we can't go any further. That's what my concern is.
Is there a reason that he cannot donate the money?
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
I can. It's up to the board as to whether you want to accept the gift and have the town run the contract. Or you ask them to run the contract on their own and deliver the plans and cost estimate at the end of that. At the end of that series.
I'm not opposed to that. If you're not opposed to that, or it could go to DPW.
I'm, I'm kind of opposed to it. So you, you.
Could it go to DPW for them to run the, the contract?
They won't.
It could, but I don't recommend that.
Can you go to your board, get approval, and then come back to us and tell us whether you have it or not? And then we can vote to this, for this thing.
Our next meet, I think, is the 23rd, if, if you want us to.
Are you, are you not going to vote to accept the money tonight?
Let's ask this. If, if, does your board have to vote? It's going to be engineering plans anyway. Do they have to vote on it no matter what? Like, the engineering as the purpose, if you did it yourself? Or engineering as the purpose and give it to the town? You need to vote for either one of those options, right?
BZ, they are 100% on top of giving this and paying for this. I just need to get an okay tonight or what, what have you. I would prefer it going to you at some later date after we've made a public announcement about it. So people don't come back and say, wait a second, what are you doing? Just like the one select person said.
You could go have the vote and then the selectman could, could determine whether they would want you to run it or the town will accept it and run it.
Yes, and they might say, Marty, just pay for it and we'll move on. So.
Okay, so you do need that information before you make a decision. It can be brought back up at your next meeting on June 23rd.
Do Sarah and Mike have to come back or can they?
I don't think that they have to come back. It's just a matter of approving.
Proving who's going to pay.
Right, yeah. And, and my, you know, having an engineer come in, if we don't have a bill in our hand that says this is what it's going to cost us, I'm a little bit nervous that that 56 is wiped out and then we owe more money and then we never got finance involved in it. And I'm a little, that's where, you know, it's a lot of moving parts. So, thank you. Let's.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, we do have a contract, a proposal, $55,000. It's ready to be signed by the town. Weston Sampson agreed to that. Marty's offered to cover that. We're, we're just asking that the town vote to, so have Brendan do what he does most efficiently, better than we could probably administer this project. And just take the money, get to phase one, get that money spent, get the design, and to your point, allocating town meeting vote. Well, nobody's going to know that until we get conceptual plans that can be suggested to present at next town meeting, the fall meeting.
I think the board understands that, that the preference is that the town take it. But they're not willing to vote on it yet until they know that Marty's group is going to give it for that purpose, whether it's done by the private or if it's done by the town.
It's going to be either one or the other. So it's going to, it'll be taken care of in the near future.
So it's up to the board.
Do you know, I, I mean, I'm willing to vote on it now, but I don't think you guys are.
If his, if his group votes on it, then yeah, I mean.
You want to say contingent upon approval?
That works.
Yeah, honey, you're going to, I'm sorry. I know there's a lot of people over there, but it's for recording, recording purposes.
I'm sorry to interrupt or interfere, but it just seems to me that the most straightforward thing, even in the beginning phase, is to have Brendan oversee whatever. Because with these people, they've been working so hard to, to figure out how to run a project. But this is really a project for the town and for the, the kids in the town and all the people. And it just seems to me that you'll know whether it's going to be feasible or not once the $56,000 has been spent. And it just seems to me that if Brendan has the bandwidth, that it should just start with him. Thank you.
So I guess get the approval. We'll vote contingent upon the approval of the friends donating the money.
We can make that motion and vote. I, I'm, I'm still, I'm sorry, I'm still hard against the fact that this was never a town project. And although the tennis courts would be there, is it the right place? Is it, is there enough space? I, I'm on the fence.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the design or task phase, tasks one through four, contingent upon the funding from the.
Friends of.
Friends of Memorial Park.
Park.
Improvement Project. Improvement Project Committee vote affirmative, affirmative vote of.
To give the money to the town.
To give the money to the town. I'm so sorry, Pam, that that was so poorly worded.
She knows what it is.
It's going to look fantastic. Trust me.
Just make me look good. Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay, so just logistics now. If Marty contacts me and says it's, the board voted, it's green light. May I sign the contract on behalf of the board and start the project?
Do you need a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I think it would be the contingency, as you said in the motion, and then to allow the town administrator to proceed with the contract.
Do we need to somehow accept the money?
Well, that's, yeah, that's part of the motion anyway. Yeah, that's in the motion.
So you just stated it, so moved.
Second.
Oppose.
All those in favor? Did you want to say all?
It'll all be the one mo, the one motion.
One vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Including the town administrator at the end.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam will decipher it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, sorry, Jay, we're running a little late here.
We, at 7:15.
So the next item on the agenda is to review and discuss correspondence with Jay. I can't say your name properly, so I'm just going to say JT regarding his questions on the school building equity, new growth and coordination among boards and committees.
Okay. Thank you all first for putting me on the agenda tonight. As many of you know, I take an active interest in our town affairs. My family loves living here. I've been here eight years. But the math of living here concerns us, unjustifiably so. We just got our annual escrow analysis and our fixed rate mortgage payment went up another $96 a month, starting next month. And that is the adjustment from estimated to actual taxes from about 12 to 18 months ago. I don't know exactly how the timing works. And that was in a year without an override. Thankfully, I'm still working and it's not a catastrophe. It's more of a nuisance at this point. Next year, with the override we just passed, it'll go up more than that. I don't even want to know. Because it, it's going to happen and I can't change it. It's already voted upon. And I'm told another one is likely for next spring, whether it be for the school or for our non-school related expenses. I'm concerned about the cycle that we appear to be in. And let me be really specific. So today, after buying in at market rate in April of 2018 with only $5,000 down and a mortgage from a hard money lender that I would not sign today, we own about two-thirds of our house because we were able to control our spending. Okay? Think about that. I didn't inherit it. I didn't get an inheritance of money. I don't have a big job. Actually, I have pretty much the same job you do, Annie. I'm a senior project manager, product manager for US Bank. Different company, but same function. If I'm having this concern, I got to believe a lot of people are too. So let's be really specific. I'm going to be 60 on my next birthday. Starting to think about estate planning. And the math that concerns me is that if Mary and I were to give our three adult kids our house, free and clear, sign it over, then even if one buys out the other two with cash, which they can't do, but if they did with no mortgage, the property taxes and utilities alone would be unaffordable. So what do we do? I really don't know. But tonight I have two specific requests of the selectman that hopefully will find constructive and timely. And before I continue, let me assure everybody in this room and everybody that might be watching this online, I consider you all to be friends and neighbors. Even when we disagree, even when we compete with each other in elections, even when we have contentious topics on boards and committees that we serve on, I, I very much feel like part of the team. So with the first item, the equity interest in Manchester schools, this is a big topic. I don't, I know a little bit about it and just enough to make a specific request. But what I understand is that Essex contributed a third of the cost of two new schools in Manchester, a number somewhere between 25 and 30 million dollars. In the banking world I come from, such an investment would give the investor a bona fide equity interest in the buildings. Now, I've read the regional agreement, which is remarkably clear and concise. As agreements go, it's pretty good. Yeah, I understand that it, that equity is not on the table. It's not part of that agreement, never was. But instead, that our towns grant each other 20-year rent-free leases to educate their students in the other town's schools. And please correct me if that's not essentially right. But the last time our lease with Manchester was up for renewal in January 2020, Administrator Zabricki recommended that Essex hire a special counsel to seek an equity interest in the Manchester buildings prior to renewing the lease at that time. And that is in the minutes of January 27th, 2020. Much of what ensued after that was done in executive session. So it's not public and this topic may be new to lots of people for the first time. But from what I understand, a special counsel was hired, work was performed, Essex tax dollars were spent to pay the special counsel, but the concept of an equity interest did not materialize. Instead, either a new lease was agreed to or at least some form of continuing resolution to enable Essex to keep sending its students to the schools in Manchester. So my first request is for the Board of Selectmen to kind of close this loop. We have, we just passed an override. We have a new selectman that was elected largely from that constituency. We should be able to go back and, and clean up a couple of things. I asked Administrator Zabricki for a copy of the lease and to my surprise, he says, I have the Essex one, but not the Manchester one. And you're here. If I misstate that, please correct me. If that's true, I, I, I want to give everybody involved the benefit of the doubt that this is some form of administrative miscommunication that's easily remedied by the 23rd. It should be that easy. This is a document request. So the first request more formally is to, is for the Board of Selectmen to ask the school committee, which is elected by and protects Essex's interests above all else, to produce a fully executed copy of whatever we have in place today. I mean, the school had, happened today. It went orderly, all as well. So there has to be something. The reason I ask is not so much that I care what the lease says. I understand there's no rent in it. But rather that Mary and I owe our share of that debt, which if you take a $30 million number and divide it by the taxable households, is almost $25,000. So Mary and I have literally borrowed $24,000. And not only do I not see our town's name on a deed anywhere, we don't even have a paper receipt in the form of a lease. Would that fly at your house? Doesn't it mine? Again, this should be simple and easily fulfilled, but the fact that this is coming up five years after the renewal begs questions. I honestly have felt at times through my own personal interactions that Essex is treated with disdain as a nuisance by our figurative Manchester spouse. If that's just me being out of date and replaying an old, false narrative, a tired old tape, great, I'll happily acknowledge that publicly. But if instead we get an eye roll and you've got to be kidding me, and this drags on in any way, that would suggest we've got some serious relationship work to do before we can, consider any further regionalization with Manchester. So that's item one. Item two, new growth in Essex. This is a completely different topic, but it's related to holding the line on property tax. taxes. I recently reviewed the plans for Essex Park Road and I asked the planning board how much new tax revenue the development would generate versus how much added cost and risk the town would take on. A line of thinking similar to what Alva just presented at the tennis courts, same idea. To my surprise, numbers likely don't favor Essex and in fact would likely result in a net outflow or a new burden to Essex if we built that development over there. Simple math, if you build 36 $1 million houses, you'll bring in roughly 13,000 each in property taxes. My house isn't quite worth that much, so I've got a pretty good idea that's the number. But each school student costs Essex over 20,000 per year. And I understand that's the going rate, that's the way it is, I don't need that explained to me. The problem is, if you build four-bedroom houses, that's who's going to live there. And if the town's already strapped, I, you know, what do we do? We've got to come up with something. I talked to Lisa, you know, Planning Board Chair, and she confirmed and gave me the legal precedent, you know, financial considerations cannot be the benefit to approve or deny a special permit. So, okay, here we are in a money straitjacket, again, with no one to blame, nothing can be done. Again, would an explanation like this fly in any other context? I just don't understand it. So my specific request is to put an article in Fall Town Meeting to repeal the open space residential development provision. And I say that not because I have any kind of expertise on that topic, it's just put something on there that's specific enough to debate. And I don't even care if it passes, I know zoning articles generally face long odds and generally don't pass because they take a two-thirds majority and the zoning's a pretty big deal. So I understand what I'm asking for there, but we've got to start the conversation about who's fighting for Essex. You know, maybe we can word the article or focus it differently, I can help with that. But we need a vigorous debate on how to keep Essex affordable. Otherwise, another year's going to pass with a lot of talented people on our boards and committees, going through the motions, producing reams of material, financial reports, et cetera, only to hit us with another big override and a shoulder shrug. Really? With the talent we have in Essex, there's no excuse for the fix we're in. I'm sorry, no excuse. I don't think voters have any idea that new development can actually make us worse off. Everybody thinks we've got to increase our tax base or we've got to redevelop, you know, dilapidated properties. Yeah, we do, but how, how can we do it if they make us worse off? Open space, sounds really good, residential development sounds good, but when you put them together, that provision in our zoning takes open space off the tax rolls in exchange for even higher density than you would have otherwise if you developed the property. Again, I would have thought the Chair of the Planning Board and the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals would have the ability to exert an opinion or say, no, this isn't a good deal for Essex, we're not doing this. You can't do that. So as we as a town explore solutions to our financial problems together, I want to urge everybody, let's listen to this, take a minute to get to know somebody you don't already know. Somebody might think differently than you do. We can preserve an independent Essex without becoming a ward of Manchester. It's going to require a little more open-mindedness, a little more grace, frankly, a lot more fight. Won't be easy, but let's please start with these two simple requests. Copy of a document and a request for an article, I don't know exactly the right form for it, but as I committed in my opening, my pledge is to always be constructive and to help in any way I can. This past year, I've had four funeral from the family, so if you haven't seen me much, that's why, I need a little break, but I'll be back. And let me just ask you in closing, you know, are you fighting for Essex? Urgent, assume, wave white flag of surrender, regionalize more, and forever be Manchester Junior. I don't want that. And I think a lot of people don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. As far as this, BZ, there's a lot of information here. Is there anything we need to vote on? Is there anything we?
Well, let's look at the requests, all right? You have a request for me to get in touch with the district to try to get a fully executed copy of the lease between the district and the town of Manchester. As Jay mentioned, the town of Essex has a document that is executed. I have been for the better part of the last two years trying to get that document. I've asked the superintendent, I've asked the town administrator in Manchester. They both suggested that I ask the other one. I did that. And I have received nothing. We were sent at one point in time a copy of the original 20-year lease and I said, no, I'm not asking for that. We all agreed actually, both towns, to pause the lease for one year and we did like a one-year extension to allow the group to discuss the possible equity stake. It didn't materialize, you're right about that. I can't get into details about what happened in executive session, but I can tell you that there wasn't an appetite to have that materialize. So when the lease, when that pause ended, we executed another document. Time to go. Essex executed a lease with the district for Essex's school and Manchester was going to do the same, but nobody can give me the document on that. Importantly, and I'm not an attorney, I'm not trying to tell you that there's a specific difference, but there may be a difference because the town of Essex owned Essex Elementary School when the first 20-year lease went into force and still owns Essex Elementary School. So it was easy for the town of Essex because the terms of the lease wouldn't change. The town of Manchester owns the land still, but there's a question as to who owns the buildings and it may be the district. And if that's the case, then the resumed lease would have to acknowledge that in some way. But I have no document at all, I cannot tell you. Now, if the board wants me to, I can contact both parties again and say the Board of Selectmen is now asking for this document and I can try to get you an answer on it.
I do agree that, I know that we've sent the information, we have signed it, we've never gotten co-signing, is that correct? We never got it returned, co-signing?
We, okay, we got a counter-signature from the district on the Essex lease. I don't believe Manchester signed ours, we asked them to, but they, you know, can't make someone do something. But we have a lease between Essex and the district. With respect to the lease between Manchester and the district, there is no document at all. There's not even a two-party document that anyone can give me. So I think he's asking for me to go back to the parties with the selectmen asking the question and try to get an answer. And I can compile for you the times that I've asked each side over the past couple years or so. And it's been done in writing, so I, but it'd be easy to show you that.
Okay. If I may, can I add something here? I, I'm a close to 40-year professional resolving conflicts like this. We need Manchester, they need us. The school is our top priority, it's our biggest budget item, I get that. But if we're having trouble with something as simple as this, I have concerns. That's why I brought this in this context, in this form or in a way. We've got to get through this. This is, this shouldn't be hard, this should be one-on-one stuff if we're really as dependent on each other as we are.
Yeah, my idea would be to take the times that I asked each side in the past, compile those and send those back out to them. I've asked you, you can see where I asked you. Now the selectmen are eager to understand what's going on and please, we ask you again, that would be my proposal.
Do we have to take a vote on that or can we, I mean?
If it's going to have the force of the selectmen, I think you should.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to have BZ do the timelines that he has done for the execution of the lease equity? Would that be it?
No, the resumption of the Manchester lease.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you get that?
So moved.
Second.
Give some discussion.
Sure.
Is it more effective to have one of us reach out to the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, who is Ann Harrison, and just say, this came up? How can we, instead of putting down a list of where you didn't respond? I'm just trying, is it better to be?
Well, just like our Board of Selectmen, everybody
Can I finish my thought on that? I'm just wondering if it's more effective to be, to just do a friendly email or do you think?
I think that may have been done. You would have to authorize the former Chair to speak to that, but she may, she may have also asked her counterpart that same question, Annie, when she was in office.
Okay.
And I think she's nodding her head that she did.
She's nodding her head, she can answer, so.
She nodded her head.
Ruth Prehn, 15 Lefkens Street, former Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Not only do we have several requests in writing for the board to understand, but Brendan and I also would meet with the town administrator in Manchester as well as the Board of Select Chair in Manchester, just the four of us in specific meetings in person. And we also met in collaboration with the superintendent. We've asked in person, I would say, Brendan, you can correct me, but I want to say four or five times, we've asked for that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and that's not even in writing, but yes, I have reached out to Greg and Ann, myself, and asked them to provide us a copy of the lease and we've not received it.
There's a guy up there. So Mark, I see your hand raised. Do you have a direct?
Can I ask a question?
Well, this isn't common time, but sure, go ahead if you have.
People have spoken, so. I will sign in, I'm just going to do this quickly. Mark Lynch, 16 R County Road. For other requests that we felt we weren't getting responses or wanted timely responses, a Freedom of Information Act request was made. My question is, is the lease a public document and is that an option?
It is a public document. A public records request is an option.
Why wasn't that undertaken?
We were trying to resolve the issue by having the, our partners figure out what was going on and provide us with the document. It has not come beyond that at this point.
Okay, I, with the speaker here, I, in resolving conflict, I'm much, much more in favor of discussion than something like a Freedom of Information Act request, but I would recommend reaching out, as Annie has suggested, and then just FO them, as they say. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's public records law in Massachusetts.
So I'm just going to do a time thing because we have an executive session we have to get into before 7:15.
So there's a motion on the table.
And seconded, right?
And seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's the one with me laying out the timelines and contacting the parties, correct?
Yep.
All right, I will do that, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. So on his other two items, the repeal of the open space, I don't, he left, but.
That's up to the board. So there was a request that we just took care of with respect to the lease.
Yeah.
And he has a request for a Fall Town Meeting article to repeal the open space residential development zoning bylaw. Now, that is something I could put on the third tier of the town meeting list if you want to talk about it when you start talking about the Fall Town Meeting, that'll be in August.
Let's do that.
Or he could, he could draft a petition and do it himself.
If you don't, well, he asked you whether you want to put it on there. That's, and if you don't, then.
Let's discuss it.
So do you want to put it on the list?
Let's put it on the list. We can always still go, go back to him and tell him to.
And those were the two requests that he had, right?
Yeah.
And then the third one is just an overall?
It was an overall statement.
Okay, so do we want to go into other business or do we want to just have you start doing your thing? You've got six minutes, seven minutes.
I would do other business.
Okay, you want to make me work. Okay, make a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of 343,010.98.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the minutes for the selectmen meeting of May 19, 2025 in the open meeting.
So moved.
Second, is that with any notes that came through?
You made the adjustments Annie asked you to?
From the minutes?
When Annie asked you about certain things in the minutes, you adjusted them already. So, right, the.
What certain things?
You asked about one thing, right?
Voting, she did a voting and she abstained?
Oh, yes.
So that's already included.
I know, it was a while ago, thank you.
Okay, to ratify the chairman's signature of a letter of support for the regional application by the town green and the metropolitan area planning councils accelerated climate resilience grant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
To authorize the chairman to sign all necessary paperwork for a Department of Industrial Accident Grant for safety training up to 25,000.
I can explain this.
Please do.
The town has participated in this grant several times. Once when the town of Essex got the grant in conjunction with Manchester and then once when Manchester got the grant as the active leader in conjunction with the town of Essex. We then went for the grant again last year and the funding for that grant was heavily reduced. And so we got a few thousand dollars. There'll be a new call for applications. This funding is necessary to keep up with things in order to remain current with OSHA, which the town is now subject to. So this authorization would allow the chairman to sign the application that will be drafted by the Board of Health Administrator, who is our OSHA coordinator, when that is ready for signature.
So this goes through the Board of Health?
It goes, well, it's actually, you're authorizing. It's going through the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Health Administrator is the town's OSHA coordinator. So she would write it, she's going to just need to reach out to Alva to get it signed before it's submitted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we have to move and sec to it? Did that matter?
What's that?
Pam wrote it, Pam got it down.
Oh, did I not do that? No, we do have to do that. Second.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Thank you.
All those in favor, okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Discuss whether the selectmen would like to collaborate with others on the destination development capital grant.
That's probably going to take too long to talk about.
Okay, so I don't see anybody, I thought shipbuilders may show up, but I don't see them. So would we table this? I don't know.
Let's see what time we have here. We might be able to do it. So it's 7:09, got about six minutes, right? All right, so do you want to just break now? I can do the motion for executive session.
No, like, so I mean, I, we can talk a little bit about this, I don't.
Well, I think you want to do it all in one unit.
All right. So I'll hold on that one. Consider making a recommendation to the Board of Public Works possibly to take the fence down. Oh, that's another big one.
Well, why don't we say this? You received information tonight about Article 97 of the Constitution and whether or not even temporarily changing the purpose of a certain section of the park, which is now tennis courts, to parking would even be allowed. Shall I seek advice on that so that we can determine whether we concur with the statement that was made?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So moved. Do we need to vote?
I'm not interested in this at all.
He's checking on Article 97.
I just, I just want consensus as to whether, so I'm not going to recommend that you take the fences down. It wouldn't, it would be the DPW in light of what was just presented to us. So my question is to the board, does the board want me to check with council? If you don't, then I don't recommend we do anything. If you do, then I'll go ahead and do that.
The only reason we'd be looking at that is if we wanted to change that to parking.
Correct.
And I don't have any data that tells me that we don't have enough parking, so.
We haven't heard on that yet.
Yeah, we hadn't heard on that. So why don't we hold this off till we come back? We have to go into executive session.
Okay, so I will set that up for you right now. I'm going to recommend that the board move into executive session to discuss collective bargaining with the Essex Police Association, to discuss collective bargaining concerning a possible successor agreement with AFSP, now in mediation, and discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the case of Victor Munoz in the town of Essex, DUA issue ID number 0083772025-03, as noted on the agenda. And that the chairman declared that an open discussion of these matters would be detrimental to the town's negotiating and litigation positions and that the chairman invite the Chief of Police to participate in the Essex Police Association and Munoz matters and then if the Finance Committee Chair Police Association and Munoz matters, and then if the Finance Committee Chair is available for her to be able to participate in person in the AFSPY discussion since she's part of the town's negotiating team, and that the Chairman declare that the board will be reconvening in regular session to continue with the board's business. You got it, somebody's got a...
So moved.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Cameron, yes.
Peter, flip an aye.
Alvin Gaharo, aye.
So, Madam Chair, I think you wanted to continue the meeting in the open session part of the meeting with the item, discuss whether the Selectmen would like to collaborate with others on a Destination Development Capital Grant for the promotion of tourism. We were told about this grant by our state senator and our state representative. It's a new grant, and the grant is looking to provide money to either communities or nonprofit organizations to put infrastructure in place that will help tourism flourish within an area. I believe that the museum may like, may want to put an application in. I'm not sure exactly what element they would focus on, but there's extra credit in this grant for projects that are proposed within a cultural district, and of course, we have the Essex River Cultural District. I wanted to ask whether the Selectmen had any wishes to look at some kind of infrastructure for the town related to tourism. I don't have anything that comes to mind immediately, but I wanted to bring up this grant opportunity. I have sent it out to various nonprofit groups in the community.
Who's eligible? Is it...
Municipalities and nonprofits.
Yeah.
So, I'll let you, either of you go, I have a couple of comments. Did you think, okay, so some of the thoughts that I had was possibly flowers on the bridge. So I understand that for one of the islands, they're doing the boats, so I thought if we had a flower bed that's the boat, you know, again, is it to promote tourism? No, but if you're sitting on the causeway stuck in traffic, it's, at least you have something pretty to look at.
And on that, I think we probably have enough money in our operating budget to do that, if you want us to just seek permission to do something like that.
Yeah, and the other things, I mean, it's very difficult because they're capital projects that they have to be, and I'm looking at things like, okay, well, do we look at an information booth? But if we get an information booth, we don't have the resources to sit somebody in it.
Yeah, we certainly don't. I mean, something the chamber could, could look at.
And then I was thinking, you know, we have sound system improvements that could happen at the school, but at the same time, that's not...
Not a tourism-related.
Tourism-located.
No one would buy tickets to go to that.
Town meeting.
So then I questioned whether or not, is there something, because we are, you know, doing something with the shipbuilders would be fine, but I want more detail. I wouldn't want to just say, yes, we'll collaborate with you unless we have an idea what they're looking for.
So, I know a few years ago when we were looking at placemaking or wayfinding or something on the causeway.
Both, yeah.
That one of the questions came up about businesses that go beyond what we dream in color, or, do you know what I mean? And you guys just did the sidewalks there, right? So is there a visual something that can keep drawing people beyond just that corner of 133 and School Street to...
Yeah, Joshua's Corner.
Yes.
Yep.
Beyond that, yeah, but do you know what I mean? So, you know, is there any sort of something that we could...
No way Joshua's Corner is.
Where Susan used to have her business.
Southern Avenue.
Cape Anne's.
133.
So.
It's the junction of Eastern Main and Southern.
Yeah. But, you know, we kind of say it stops there, and there are businesses beyond that that, that people don't necessarily know about because there's no kind of indication that, you know, town goes on beyond this. So I mean, that was just something that we talked about at that point. We didn't do anything about it, but that's...
The chamber's familiar with this grant.
I got it out to everyone, yeah.
Yeah.
And plus, I think there's probably a minimum amount, a minimum spend here. They're talking about real infrastructure.
And, but they also said technical, so is there some type of a website improvement we can do or...
Oh, well, what about, I know that the chamber...
Donation signs.
Well, the chamber wanted to do...
I hit the minimum.
A reverb, a revamping of that site, you know, the Essex, visit Essex site, so could that be it? But I think that...
They could apply directly for that.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the town. I kind of think it's better for a nonprofit to go and find something.
I agree.
But we would support that effort.
Yeah, yeah.
It's also due by July 9th.
Yes, it is.
I don't think we can get it together before then. This is very quick.
So that's where my thing is, this is kind of feeling like a rush.
Yeah.
Like I would call it, I don't want the political people to hear me, but anybody says, can you do this by July 19th? I'm like, oh, this is a scam, I'm not looking at this.
So we'll encourage the nonprofits to, and I think, I think the museum might, might pull, try to pull off an application.
Okay, great.
But I'd like to know what it is if we're going to sign on with them.
Well, if you, if you ask for a letter of support, then we'll know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they're free to apply for it and not ask anyone about it anyway.
Yeah.
The only other question is more of a housekeeping. Did anybody have a chance to attend the June 4th meeting? Because I think we got this on June 3rd, yeah?
Yeah, I don't think anyone had a chance to.
I didn't think so.
All right, so I'll encourage the nonprofits. Okay.
All right, so let me check that off. We don't really have to do anything, correct?
Correct.
All right, consider making a recommendation to the Board of Public Works to possibly take the fence down around the tennis courts of Memorial Park and to remove the nets and posts to allow for parking in the area, at least for a temporary basis.
Yep, so this is where the board was talking and where you left off before you went into executive session, and the question is, do you, do you have any interest in taking these fences down? If you don't, then we don't need to go any further.
Do we need the space?
Well, we added those, I think only six paid for the non-residents.
Right, yeah. I mean, the tennis courts could probably handle 20 cars.
Well, we're talking both cars with trailers.
Yeah, probably 20.
So, you think 20?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, you know, feel, I know Annie, I think says no, but I kind of feel like they're going to, the fence is going to have to come down anyways, even if the new tennis court goes in, but...
It may be illegal on a temporary basis.
I know this was recommended by the chief. I don't know if we want to ask the chief if he has any viewpoints.
Yeah, he did, he recommended this to the Board of Public Works, and I believe they asked it to be, to come to the Selectmen, which is why it's before you tonight. Go ahead.
So the biggest issue down there is when there's baseball games, that really takes over the parking for the entire park, including the center spaces.
Everywhere.
In the past four weekends, we've written 76 citations down on the municipal lot. The majority were for the center spot violation, so if, when we park on the field, people say, well, why are you letting them park on the field? It's destroying the grass. Why don't you have them just park on the tennis courts? Because the fence is falling down for the most part anyway. If the court can't be played on now because it's in such disrepair, why not just take the fence down and let them temporarily park vehicles for the baseball game on the courts and try and salvage some of the field? If it's legal.
Right, so apparently someone did research, we heard from Mike, and he said he thinks that under Article 97, even on a temporary basis, you can't use a feature of a park that's parkland, which ours is, without first getting permission to change the use of that particular area. I don't know if that's true, but if you have interest in taking these things down, I would recommend that you get a legal opinion first. So that's my question. Does the, does the board and the majority want me to get a legal opinion on whether you can take these fences down without going through literally an act of the state legislature?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd say it's, you know, good information.
Okay, I'll get that, and I'll bring it back up at the next meeting.
And they'll know, they'll have that answer on the tip.
Pretty quick, yeah.
All right, so we're going to start with that, and then we'll probably put it on the next, the 23rd.
Bring it back to the next one, yeah.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Consider Project Adventure's request for proposal for the lease of office and outdoor space possibly at Centennial Grove. How did this come up?
So I think, Annie, you were provided an email that they were looking for this, for people that were interested, that might be interested in providing them with a lease for space. And so it's on the agenda in case the Selectmen had any interest in perhaps space down at the Centennial Grove. I guess the advantage would be you would have a tenant that has got a long-term lease with a known amount of appreciable funding that you can rely upon versus events that is currently what the recommendation of the Economic Development Committee was and what we're going after. Eventually getting the event venue up and running to the point where you can count on that, albeit on a seasonal basis. I don't know if there is any interest in this or not, but it's on here for you to discuss, and then we can go from there.
For me, does it have to... For me, there's just not enough information. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do this. One, we already know that people complain because the Y is not allowing them to be at the Grove anytime they want to go. This would only add to that.
What the outdoor space be, do we know?
Like a ropes course, I think. They, they call, they have a certain name for it.
Oh, like what they do up at Chabaco?
Remember how they used to have it behind the elementary school?
Challenge course.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think ninja warrior.
Yeah, and I just, I mean, people go walking through those woods. I just see that this being, taking over places again that the town...
Well, maybe if they wanted to fix up the garage out there.
Well, they'd need...
Fix up the whole damn thing.
They'd need to put a, have to put a tight tank in too, just to have facilities.
This might be a loser, but why not think about it if you had consistent revenue coming in? Fix up and maintain that building.
Again, I would want to know what the rent would be. I mean, if we can have events there...
Long-term, yeah.
And it's only for three hours, and then the townspeople can come in again. I, I just feel like hearing complaints constantly every time the Y opens the summer camp drives me crazy.
As somebody who cleaned that thing last week, we're not maintaining it. Like, it's, it's crumbling. Like even the windows weren't necessarily closed. It's, having somebody in there, living and, you know, working there is, I think, something to consider. They'd also have to sink a lot of money into it.
So, I mean, to me, is this something that the EDC should look at also? Because...
Well, they're asking for responses by June 15th. I know that that isn't going to happen.
I don't, it's not going to happen. If, what it's going to happen is that we would still have to do a lot of thinking about it, and it wouldn't be this year.
No, it wouldn't be.
Unless we had land someplace else I don't know about, but...
So this is, is this for year-round?
Well, they're looking for a building.
Pardon?
Is it year-round or just for summer?
No, it's where they want their offices. They're moving, I think they're moving around.
They'd want to make it year-round.
Moving out of, yeah, the trustees are taking over there, yeah.
Oh, is it really?
I think so.
Yeah, they'd want to make it year-round, and there's, there's even a hitch to that. Let's say they put in a tight tank. You can't put in a tight tank unless it's a seasonal facility.
Oh.
Without going through full testing for a full septic system. So with the timing and everything, you know, it's something, it was an opportunity that was put forward, and so the board can talk about it, but I just need to know whether you have interest in responding in any fashion to Project Adventure.
It doesn't sound like there's interest.
No.
Okay. That's that.
Okay. Next one. Consider whether one Selectman will serve on the government affairs now...
So this can be tabled because Annie and I thought that they were asking her to perhaps become a member of the committee when you and I talked, but I guess it's, or at least that's what I got out of the conversation. They're just asking you to go see them once.
I'm going there tomorrow morning.
To introduce yourself. And that's it.
I don't know what, I have no idea what they do.
Yep. So when you and I talked, we were thinking perhaps they were trying to expand their committee to start bringing municipal representatives from various towns onto the actual committee. I heard from Colleen Murdoch this morning, that's not what they're looking to do. They're just bringing Annie in one time so she can introduce herself as a new select person from Essex.
And Annie, just make sure that, because they didn't do that when I was brought on, and they...
Not me either.
So, I had asked BZ, like, when's the...
Were they meeting?
I don't know, at their office.
Oh, right, okay.
Probably Gloucester, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so...
Or dial in. I think I can dial in too.
We'll table this and, you know, we'll look forward to hearing what you...
Yeah, it's not what's being asked for, yeah.
I will report out what I learn, if that helps.
Yes, that'd be great. Consider whether one Selectman will serve on the Numbers Crunching Committee for the Manchester Essex Regional School District. So I already reached out to Pam about this. Pam reached out to myself and Ann Harrison to see if it's still going to be the same as it was before. That before, what happened was is that Ruth Perrine had given up her spot as a select person to give it to Ben. So now with Ben being, he'll be a collaborator, but he's, he's just too overwhelmed to be able to handle it. So Jody will be the FinCom person, and my recommendation is for me to fill in that Numbers Crunching group. Any comments?
Oh, it's good.
I would like to do that. And I'll tell you why.
You know what, I understand why, but I've been the chair, and I was also on the FinCom, the school subcommittee FinCom, so why don't I try it? And then we'll see if we, if I pass it on to you.
You could take it to a vote as well. That's up to the board if you disagree.
Do you want to...
I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote yes, so, I mean, you've already got it, so...
Well, no, it depends on what Peter would say. You're interested, Alva's interested.
I'm going to go with the chair.
So...
All right.
So it's going to be Alva as the representative to the Numbers Crunching, correct?
To that, to that point then, I would like to have a discussion among the Board of Selectmen about what is our, what are our financial goals, not just for schools, but everything, so that we are also engaged with the Finance Committee about what is happening in terms of budgets and articles at town meeting and how that stuff is structured. And that can be at any time in the next two...
How about July? July?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay. Is that what the board wants to do?
July's fine.
Yep.
So the Finance Committee would come in, and the Selectmen and the Finance Committee would talk about the town's overall goals, financial goals. Yes? Okay. Got it.
Determine which Selectman will replace the former Selectman Perrine at the quarterly meetings at the Greater Chamber Cape Anne Commerce Essex Division Leadership.
So there are, right now, there are leadership meetings that are going on. These are not Essex Division meetings, these are not chamber-wide meetings. We decided that an informal group meeting on a quarterly basis can help information going back and forth between the municipality and the, and the local businesses. It had been former Chairman Perrine and myself, and then Michelle and Mark from the chamber, and the interim director, Sam. And so the question is now that Ruth is no longer on the board, does one of the sitting Selectmen want to serve in this capacity for these, this informal session? It happens in the morning usually.
What do they do?
If there are any hot topics to come up. So, when, once when we had one of these sessions, the board had just done the permitting at, I think it was at Rivers Bend, and there were some changes allowed in Woodman's, and we talked all about how, you know, we started with a policy, but the board, you know, was highlighting the fact that, that some changes had been made, and it was a good discussion. It's basically current events in business, and...
And what can the town...
Right.
...do to help move things along? I'm fine to do it, or Annie, if you want to. I'm not picking on, not picking on Peter, because I know that he's got other things that he's got his name against.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, I'd be fine.
I'd like to do it, but I want to make sure that...
All right, so if, Annie, I'm fine with Annie doing it?
All right, so it's going to be Annie?
Sure.
The next one we're planning is in July. I'll let you know about it, okay?
So, the next one is me. It's discuss the, regarding the election of a candidate from the Housing Authority for the Affordable Housing Trust. I've gotten no responses from my emails. So, first, I sent out a group email that I got no responses to.
Right, and just for the board's information, it needs to be, in, in the bylaw, it needs to be either a current sitting member of the Housing Authority or a former member of the Housing Authority. And so, we've actually tracked down all those names, and Alva has actually contacted all of those names. Some people that, we, we went back many years, and some people are deceased, actually. So, anyone that is still with us has been contacted, and you have not gotten...
I've gotten one response, because I sent out a private email to them, and they're like, nope. So, I'm going to try and do a private one to each of them to see if that helps, but I wanted to know what happens if we don't find somebody.
How many are there now?
So, on the Affordable Trust, there's like one from the FinCom, one from the different...
Seven, I believe.
Seven, and there's six now?
Because Diane Pauley decided that she didn't want to continue. So, there needs to be, and she was a former Housing Authority member. There now needs to be somebody else that's either on there now or was on there in the past.
Yeah.
So, I will send some more emails. I, I guess I'll, you know, let you know if I get a response.
And we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay, and this next one here, I'm going to make a motion to ratify the board's signature on the 2025 Small Business Week proclamation on June 1st through June 7th. And this was given to, at the Chamber last week?
Yes.
So, moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, this next one went on the agenda when a, a group was, from the Lake Association, was looking to rent the Grove Cottage. We've been since told that they're not looking to do that anymore. But if they are going to do it, because they still might toward the end of the summer, they're seeing whether they could, instead of paying a fee, provide some in-kind services. I'm not so sure it's a great idea, because the whole goal is to try to make revenue.
Right.
But if you were going to consider that...
Well, can I just...
We're not at a revenue-making point.
We also, lots of people have done volunteer work there, and lots of people have done, put this, you know, work services there also. And I just think it would set a precedence that, well, I painted a window.
Right, so, I don't want the fee. So, that's something you can consider. The, the things that need to be done still, that are pressing issues, as Annie mentioned, the glass needs to be cleaned up with a razor when they paint it around the windows. Usually, you go back through with a razor. They didn't cut it very finely. The green trim of the railings, and some of the white trim isn't done yet. And then, Annie, I think you mentioned, somebody even came forward to say that they could line the basketball courts for pickleball.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That that's possible.
Is it the right size?
Chris Bevelacqua from the Y...
Yeah.
Wanted to do it for the Y, and said, I can leave the equipment there in a deck box, so that if you wanted to go and play pickleball after... And he said, I said, you could fit two pickleball courts on the tennis courts, and he said, yeah. He has to line the basketball courts anyway, so this would just be...
So, you're talking the big one over by the pavilion?
The one that went in for the movie.
Yeah, the Adam Sandler one, yeah.
Oh, okay, not the other one.
Didn't he put the one over by the Grove?
He did, but, yeah, that's small. That's just a little...
Well, I was trying to make sure, I was thinking the smaller one.
Is that something you're interested in, by the way? Because the Y uses the area. That'd be a way to get pickleball going up and running.
As long as it's still residence-only, it just...
It is. There's no, been, been no change. Because if he's going to be doing the lining, do you want him to line it...
He's doing lining for pickleball?
For the basketball anyways. It's got to be relined?
Yeah.
Is it something you want set up as a trial or not?
There's no fence or anything, but maybe, I mean...
It's all like, you know, with the things that...
The nets?
Yeah.
But there's no fence around it so the ball rolls away?
There isn't. It would be kind of like a...
So, but it would be painting?
It'd be painting the lines.
I mean, first of all, that court needs to be repainted anyways, but the lines would make it confusing, it wouldn't be a basketball court then.
It would be a different color.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like there's professional basketball being played there. It's just kids going down there.
No, the kids, kids could, I mean, anytime I go down there, there's kids playing.
I guess, I think they must have, I think they have, do basketball games.
Well, we can put this on, if you're interested in talking about it more, we can put it on the agenda for next time. Are you, or you're not interested in talking about it?
I think it's a good idea.
I...
They might want it. Do they want it as pickleball?
They want to do it for the kids, I think, first, but...
For pickleball?
They said, you can leave the equipment in this deck box, and other folks can use it.
Yeah.
Why not?
Yeah. We'll hear noise complaints.
But if you, if you want to, if you want to officially say that, I recommend, I brought it up because I'm going through things that I heard about that are in work that could be done in kind, but I didn't know it was the Y. In this case, if you want to go forward with that, I recommend you put it on the agenda separately, because there might be people who say, who authorized this?
Right. And it's not really on our agenda, so I would say...
That's my point. But if you're, if you're interested in talking about it more, I recommend that that go back on the agenda. Is it something you want to talk about?
Sure. Before we leave the Alan McCoy one, does he have any particular skills that we need that could be applied to the cottage that might make it valuable for him to do that?
He didn't say. He just said in kind. He was very gentle.
Okay, so it'd be just like doing any old...
Right.
I don't know him, but I did hear that he has done some other work for the town in the past, but again, I...
But if he's like a, you know, a great carpenter or something, can fix this, that, and the other thing inside, or I think it might be valuable.
Can you just specify the work that needs to be done and ask him to do that work?
Well, I, that's why I gave you the list. I don't know of anything else that needs to be done.
Yeah, but I mean...
So, do we, I mean, so they're not going to rent it? So, he doesn't have a reason to have a...
They moved, they moved their application to the next board meeting to see if they can get their act together, but they may not ask for it at all. But if they do, are you interested in this in-kind concept, or are you just, you know...
I mean, so what are we talking? The rental fee? It depends on what they are actually doing.
Depends on when they want to go, and, you know...
And it would only be for the rental fee?
Several hundred dollars.
For the cottage, not, nothing else that they're doing?
Cottage, several hundred dollars. Is it something you want to hear more about, or no?
Only if he brings the license back to us. I, I don't want to talk about it, I mean, if that's going to be his deciding factor...
So, you want to talk about it at the time they apply, if they apply?
Correct.
Okay.
So, if it's $200, we need to have something that they're going to do that's worthy of...
Right, and if he's got some skill, that would be even greater, you know, if he has something that he's...
I'm just a little bit concerned about everybody coming to us saying, oh, well, I want to rent it now.
Right, but I mean, just general volunteers versus somebody who has a real skill for something that needs to be done there, I don't know, you know, what, where we're at with...
I can bring it, if they do come forward, then you can, and they can either pay, or you could say, no, we want that done. Please do that. All right?
Yeah.
All right, so, next on the agenda is for us to discuss the, the possible formulation of a permanent indoor entertaining license for the Grove with appropriate controls.
And so, I provided to the board a list of potential conditions that would be in this general permit. Things like, all windows and doors must remain closed whenever any type of entertainment is occurring in the cottage. Entertainment may only be offered for a total of, fill in the blank, hours or less during any one cottage rental event. The volume of the entertainment must be such that it does not carry substantially beyond the cottage property, and must be turned down if complaints are made and the Essex Police Department requests such action. Entertainment must not be offered before blank or after blank, and is not offered at all on blank days of the week. A certain amount of money deposit must be provided to the town prior to the event, and substantial violations of the license may result in forfeiture of the deposit. And then, other items, I, I wrote on here, other items the selectmen might want to propose tonight. So, I gave you a few starters. Do you like those things? Do you want to cross some off? Do you have things to add?
I, I have two questions, questions on two of them. One is the number of hours. Do we care? I mean, if the windows are shut...
If it's contained within, it probably doesn't matter.
And same with the...
Same thing, I said rental time. I said rental time, because if you're there for, rented for two hours versus you rented for six hours...
Yeah.
If the windows are closed and you have the place for six...
So, cross, cross off number two, all right? What else?
And number four as well, because your rental time determines when you start and...
Okay. So, that leaves us with a few things. Are there things you would want to add?
Can I propose that we take number one off? Because it's, there's no air conditioning in there, is there?
Oh, we have a plan for that. So, Scott Energy is going to be donating the equipment and the labor to put through the wall units in, like you'd see at a hotel.
Okay.
And they'll only be used during an event, so it's not like we're going to be paying a bill. The, the event rental fee will defray the cost of the electricity. And that's, it's either air conditioning, or on the shoulder season, heating. The unit will do both.
Okay, and then, is it amplified music or any kind of music?
And it, it can be amplified if it's, as long as the volume is contained.
Yeah, as long as you can't hear it.
Okay, so you don't need to specify amplified?
No.
So, on number five, the security, the deposit, should it be a security deposit like you would a rental that, it's above and beyond, and then you get it back?
Yeah, that's, that's just an idea I had. I think, though, if somebody just says, you know, police come, and then they turn it up again, and, okay, well, fine, but you lost your money. It's just an idea.
So, it is a security deposit, not just a down payment?
It's a noise deposit.
Yeah.
It's not like a security deposit where you damaged the...
Right, well, that too.
We have that already written in there, but this is special thing where, yeah, forget it, we're just going to keep it loud. Okay, well, how much is it worth to you, you know?
All right, well, so then, if it's just for the entertainment...
You don't have to do it. I'm just, I was just trying to come up with ideas.
I'm thinking that, you know, I think they... Make a donation to the police or something, and...
Well, do you want that provision, or do you not like it?
Well, I, I guess then it would be like a noise security deposit?
Yes.
Okay. I'm...
Why not?
It would be, as I say, it would be a substantial violation. If they're asked to turn it down and they comply, okay.
But if you, if you...
If they have to come back a second time? Okay, well, you lose your money.
But if you, if you, if you comply, then you get your deposit back?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Just stressing the importance of the sound.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Anything else you'd want to see on there? Because at the next meeting, I could kind of put this together into a more coherent fashion, so that you could actually vote on issuing that license that runs with the cottage. Basically, it would be an annual license for the cottage.
I think it's good just to have...
This is indoor only.
Yes.
However, we all know it's on the water.
Well, that, that's why we have these provisions. So, do you want me to set that up so you can at least consider it?
Others, I'm, I'm for it. I, I think...
All right, I'll set it up for the next meeting.
Okay, consider revising the town-written procedure under Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 15. Just, oh, how do you say that?
Disposition.
Disposition of the tangible supplies less $10,000.
Less than $10,000. So, we already had a policy in place that says, if the town is, is disposing of something that's worth less than $10,000, we had a request for written offers, and we had a public auction, option. But there perhaps should be some exceptions. And the reason I say that is, we've now got a situation where we're being offered a boat for some money, but at a substantially lower price than the market value as a gift to the town, but the offer includes turning over the hull of the old boat, which is in severe disrepair, to the offerer. So, that would be a specific provision of, of this surplus supply to a specific party. So, it's not like...
It's actually a trade.
Right, it's a trade. We usually, if we know about this in advance, we usually at town meeting vote to have, to authorize the selectmen to dispose of the old whatever by sale or trade. We don't have that here, because this offer just came to us now. And so, if you vote to change the policy, it would be the one, under exceptions, let's see... C, if the procurement officer has identified a party willing to accept the supply in exchange for a non-monetary benefit to the town. Town Council suggested that we could just say a benefit, because it would still be monetary. So, it would just say a benefit to the town, such as providing in-kind services or other supplies of equal or greater value. In this case, it would be greater value than the supply to be disposed of.
Sure.
So, if you agree to this change in the policy, then you can take up the next agenda item and consider whether you want to accept the gift of this boat. So, first...
The boat be used for the lake again, primarily?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's just to offset that?
It's a small boat, yeah. So, are you, are you interested in voting to accept the change to the policy with the exception of the word "non-monetary" coming out of Section C at the end?
I have another proposed edit.
Okay.
Request, under request for written offers. It, it only requires you to do the bulletin board downstairs.
Yes.
So, I propose that you take, starting at also advertise through Craigslist, and move that, do and, and then add at least 10 consecutive calories. Do you want me to show you my edit?
Yeah.
So, it requires you to do one plus another electronic, because I just don't think people come into town hall to look at the town.
We could add that.
Yeah, and then you finish it up with, for at least 10 consecutive calorie days.
Okay.
Okay.
So, if you can, if you don't mind handing that to me, then I can know exactly what you're saying. So, with those two edits, are, is the board in favor of changing the policy, amending the policy?
So moved. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one, you're done.
Yep.
Consider an offer for a substantially discounted boat as a replacement to the Harbor Master, Harbor Master Department's Boston Whaler that is primarily used on the lake, for lake patrol.
So, again, there is a boat that's been offered to us with, with a motor, because the motor from the old boat isn't any good either. The, the, the trade would be, this donor gets the old boat and the motor that's in be, this donor gets the old boat and the motor that's in disrepair, and they recondition that and do whatever they're gonna do with it, but you get a new boat and motor that are in very good condition, a value of around $25,000, for, I believe, right now, $4,000-something dollars, and then eventually, I think we need to put a canopy on it or something, is what the chief of police told me, who's going to be the Harbor Master as of July 1st.
Um, I'm sorry. The, we, the boat that we're gonna get for free is not with a motor, or with a motor?
It is, with, with a motor.
Oh, for the fee.
It's, it's a value of $25,000, roughly.
Is it the same size?
I, I don't know enough about it. I just know that it is, is an equivalent boat. Here, here he comes.
So it's a 17-foot polar craft, and the Boston Whaler is currently 15-foot, so two feet longer. The motor that it comes with is a 70 horsepower Honda four-stroke, brand-new. Um, the existing whaler has a pre-1980s E-Tec carbureted antiquated that's, doesn't even really have any parts left to fix.
It comes on a trailer?
Comes with a trailer. So the trailer and hull can be donated. There was an issue with, I think, the warranty or the sale of the motor, so we're really just paying for the motor, and with the trade that was offered, it would come out to be about four and change, and then roughly $5,000 with the BIM and ETOP, so that the assistants aren't roasting out in the sun.
So it's a substantial, it, it restores the capability, because the current boat is in disrepair. It's a substantial uptrade for a savings of about $20,000, and it would be funded by moving money that's already in the fiscal year '25 Harbor Masters budget, with, uh, with approval from the Finance Committee. And so, we wanted to make sure that the board was okay with this, and if so, it's something that we could put in motion, and the, our future Harbor Master can work with the, the donor and with the current Harbor Master with respect to, uh, making this, um, happen, if the board is in favor.
So would the, the new top be put on it prior to its being given to us?
Yes, we could work that out with the donor.
Okay. So it's not something we'd have to send it out to?
Direct.
To be redone, okay. Yeah, I think that sounds good.
I make a motion, um, to, um...
Accept the gift.
Accept the offer of the, um, boat and replacement of the, um, Harbor Master Boston Whaler.
So moved.
As trade.
As trade. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um... I am going to go into approving of appointments. Um, question for you, BZ, as far as the Affordable Housing Trust, which is me, um, would it be two years, or one year, since my, my thing's up next year?
Well...
It's two years, you're separating them, um, it's two years.
It's two years.
Also on the appointments, the board at the last meeting authorized the appointment of Harbor Master Fiallo as a deputy Harbor Master as of July 1st, but we do not know yet whether he wants to accept that. The only reason it's on this agenda was, I think, Pam, you said, to sign, sign the appointment card, because that wasn't available at the meeting you voted it at. But I would recommend that you don't sign that until he decides whether he wants to accept. So it would be, the appointments as listed on the agenda, with the exception of that one, until you hear back. And my understanding is, through the chief, that we may hear from the Harbor Master, the current Harbor Master by Wednesday?
Yes, when we inquired if he was gonna stay or go, he said he'd give us, uh, two weeks' notice, roughly two weeks ago.
Yep, so we'll check into that.
I'm gonna table that.
I propose that we pull the strategic planning committee?
Oh, yeah, that, well, let me just give a report on it. Um, I didn't, where is that? Oh, okay, so the board asked me at the last meeting to verify people who were on the board when it last produced a plan, the committee, whether they wanted to continue. The people listed on the agenda all said, "Yes, they wanted to continue." Two people didn't respond, and that's listed, and, uh, the superintendent of Public Works does not want to be reappointed. Since then, we also got interest from other people, which I've provided to the board in a handout at the meeting tonight, and I think you should put the whole thing back on the agenda next time, with the ability to choose, you know, we'll list it as the ability to choose, um, members. You do have a copy of the original makeup of the committee, back from 2015, when the town planner put this together for the selectmen. And you can change this, by the way. So, for instance, one of them is Essex Merchants Association. They don't exist anymore, but the Economic Development Committee does. You might want somebody from there on there. So, that type of thing.
That's what I was gonna say, as far as we should probably review that, so that we have a better understanding. Um, I know, Annie, I think you were on the original, so you may have historical information, but, um...
You could have an agenda item that would talk about the makeup of the committee, and also consider names for appointment, potential names for appointment to the committee.
Can we also look at, um, committees that don't meet anymore? Like, aren't, isn't the Board of Selectmen the Kenoma Point Planning Committee now, or the...
No, that, that is defunct. In fact, actually, um...
What, what doesn't meet anymore on this list?
Where's, where's the Kenoma Point Planning Committee?
Essex Merchants is gonzo, right?
Oh, on this list, yeah. You're right. Kenoma Point Planning Committee is defunct.
Okay.
The Essex Merchants Association no longer exists.
Mm-hmm.
So, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Conservation, Finance, School, Public Works...
School Committee is not noted on this list? Oh, yes, it is.
It is, yep. Public Works, Council on Aging, Community Preservation.
But the Building Committee...
The Building Committee does not meet, but the Open Space does. So those three could come off.
Mm-hmm.
But what I'm saying is, I can put a, uh, something on the agenda for the next meeting. Remember, this Strategic Planning Committee is not gonna meet anytime soon. There's not a lot of urgency to this.
Yeah.
You bring it up at the next meeting, to talk about the purpose and goals again, maybe amend that, and have the ability to appoint members to the various, uh, spots that you will define or redefine.
All right, can I take a motion to approve the appointments, so noted on the, um, page two and three? Not numbered.
Except for the deputy?
I, I, hold on, I haven't gotten that yet.
Okay, got it, got it.
I was trying to find the numbers. Um, except for the Deputy Harbor Master and for the Strategic Planning Committee.
And can I vote for myself? Or should I?
Oh, 'cause you're the eight towns in the Great Marsh.
And the M, M.A.P.C.
So you could do a vote, except for all three of those things.
Well...
Have all three vote on that, and then just vote on Peters.
Well, then I'd have to do the same thing for me.
Yeah.
For the Emergency, um, Planning Committee.
Yeah, you could do it.
So how about we just take a vote and move it?
Well, just go in blocks, then. Start at the beginning.
All right. Okay, so we're gonna start up here with the Affordable Housing Trust for a partial two-year term, for Alvin Gaharo.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Albert Staines?
Yep.
Uh, for the, um, Board of Registars for three years, Eleanor, is it Wolf?
So moved.
Sec, sorry, Annie?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, for the Council on Aging for three years, we've got Ann Buckley, Mary Heaney, and Sue Pardey.
And Catherine Rueda.
And Catherine.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, for the eight towns and the Great Marsh Coalition for one year, Peter Fippen?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
De, uh, for the Assistant Harbor Master?
Yep.
Three years. We've got Greg Perry and Ken Wilson.
So moved.
Hi, Ken Wilson, he doesn't work here anymore.
So just Greg Perry?
Right.
Okay, um...
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Local Emergency Planning Committee for one year, Alvin Gaharo.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Albert Staines? For the M.A.P.C. Representative for three years, Peter Fippen?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Stane.
Aye. For Police Officer Part-Time, one year, Mark Polanski, Shane Seacamp, and Donald Trumpley.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Town Council for one year, KP Law?
So moved.
Second, I'd like discussion on that.
Okay.
Um, how, how do you evaluate, you know, this, and when do you kind of, is it every, like, you know, when do you ever kind of like stop and say, "Is this, is this working? When do we..."
Generally, when it's come up in the past, the board has been in agreement that KP Law has such a wide variety of experts and different programs, that it's to the town's advantage, since we're so small, to have that at our fingertips. We get a lot of, um, free updates on a lot of changes in, in law, and in precedents that are set, because the firm has its fingers in so many areas. If you just had one town council, you would constantly be getting special counsel for this, and special counsel for that.
Yeah, I'm not questioning, who, I'm just wondering, when do you kind of evaluate?
At, at the time where the, where the reappointment is recom, is on the list.
Okay.
Would be the time. So this would be it.
One year.
And, um, generally speaking, the board has been satisfied with the, the breadth of what they're providing.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna move down to license, um, for a senior commercial shellfish permit.
You can just say now for that, as, as listed on the agenda.
I wanna discuss something.
Oh, okay, got it.
Um, so, we don't have to do it now, but I would like to think about, um, senior, seniors' commercial license, we give it for free, and we make students pay 200, and yet, I'd like to question...
They have to give it for free, if they're over 65.
No, the students have to pay.
Oh, students.
I said the students. So I'm saying, is, is this something we want to do, is to keep it free?
Oh, all right.
That's what I'm saying.
Want me to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, if you can put it on the agenda. That's not stopping, um, Greg, uh, sorry, Gary.
Are we voting it?
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for the, um, one-day, Sunday entertainment license, ratify the chairman's signature. This was the Essex River Culture District. Um, this is happening on June 28th.
So moved.
It says randy, but is June...
Oh, that's open.
Um, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, before we go to reminders, we'll go back to BZ, so he can give his report.
Okay. First item on the report has to do with a successor land lease. The Shea's Restaurant, former Shea's Restaurant, I don't know what's gonna open there in the future. A corner of that building is on town property. Ten years at a time, town meeting has been authorizing the selectmen to enter into a lease for that very small parcel of, of land. This time, the board asked me to put together the same lease that we've put together in the past. I had town council review it against the changes that the new owner would like to see, and he was fine with that. The key is, with, there's now a section in here that says, "This lease shall automatically terminate if the footprint of the existing building is changed, so that no portion of it remains on the premises." That way, if that happens, there's no reason for them to have a claim at all on the town's property, or a lease thereof. So I'm recommending that the board sign this 10-year lease with, um, let's see here, Essex Table LLC, and I just noticed on the version we were sent, I guess it's still gonna be, it says Greenbow Corporation, which was the old company, DBA Essex Table LLC. That's what they wanted on there. It comes right from their attorney.
And this is okay with what was voted at town meeting?
Yeah, oh, yeah. And this was checked out by town council, and we added that provision that the board wanted to see.
Okay.
So do you want me to take a motion to sign?
Yes, please. And you can decide whether you want to sign it now, or sign it outside of a meeting after the, uh, leaseholder signs. It's just a preference, it's up to you.
Sign it now.
So, um, I take a motion to sign the successor land lease for the corner of Shea's Restaurant, currently under the DBA of...
Uh, Essex Table LLC.
Essex Table LLC.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's for now, right?
You can, yeah.
Yeah.
Then I'm gonna give an update on the fuel depot situation. Um, after reaching out to both the superintendent of Public Works and the engineer that handles the closed landfill for the town of Essex, his name is Mike Rustkowski, um, I was unable to understand fully, without, um, conflicting messages, what was, what had to be done if the site that will be chosen is the site that's in between the temporary storage building and the DPW barn. So it's kind of on that non-public side of the temporary storage building. And I was told a variety of different things, and then the superintendent got back to me eventually and said, um, "You really need to check that out with the DEP." Nobody would tell me who at the DEP they deal with, or anything of that nature. So I took it upon myself to inform the chairman of the Board of Public Works that I was going to make contact with DEP, which I did. I did find the right, uh, division in DEP, and they sent back the study that was done when the DPW barn was put up, the metal DPW barn that you see there on the site. And that study, uh, which was a study they had done by an engineering firm at the time, divided the area up into three segments, one of them being a part of the old landfill that was for construction waste, and that's actually called, I believe, Area 3, where the DPW barn actually got sited. Then there was a part of the, um, site that is for the transfer station, that's Area 2, and that, incidentally, would include the first site that I showed everyone that's been marked out on the ground when we went for the site visit. And then Area 1 is the old, closed landfill itself. Of course, we're not gonna go to Area 1. Area 3 needs more study, and Area 1 could possibly be a site that we could install the pad for the fuel depot, um, without having to go through any more complicated permitting. And the reason I know that is, I was told that when the DPW put in the, um, slab for the new compactors that you see at the transfer station, that they did contact the DEP, and the DEP said that no special permit was necessary. So after the DEP told me, "If you're gonna put it in Area 3, you might have to go through a process like you did when you did the DPW barn," and they showed me all those documents. But I've since gotten back to them and said, "Okay, but what if I wanna go in Area 2, the transfer station area, just like we did with the pad for the compactors?" And they haven't gotten back to me yet. So it's, could be that, even though the Area 3 site is more fa, is more, um, favored by the fire department and the fire chief to get it kind of out of the, more of the public travel pattern, it could be that the permitting for that would be so onerous, you might want to go with Area 2, which is the area that was already marked out by the donation bins. Jury is still out, I just wanted to give you an update on what has transpired since you had that site visit.
Is Area 1 the one closest to the dirt pile?
Area, Area 1 is the old landfill.
Oh, oh, okay.
What do you mean the old landfill? We had...
The old landfill, whale back where the grass is.
Uh-huh.
So which site?
There's three parts to the, to the property in DEP's eyes.
Yeah, okay.
The old, closed landfill is Area 1.
Okay.
Area 3 is the other side of the storage building, where the DPW barn and salt shed are. Area 2 is the transfer station, and in Area 2, we drew a box on the ground by the donation bins.
Yeah, two, two potential sites there.
Other site will not work, because if you put it on the other side of the sewer line, you will have to move the dirt. We're not allowed to touch that dirt unless we have Haz-Warper trained personnel, and we don't.
So I thought, I thought we had, I thought we had measured on the other side, and it would fit, but it would be tight.
It will not, it will not.
Okay, so I have a question regarding that dirt being bad dirt. Have we seen the test results, or can we ask for the test results?
I can ask for them, I have never seen them.
I just feel like, hearing from other DPWs, they're like, "What? No." So I just would like to know that indeed we do have test results?
The superintendent, as you heard, said that the area was sampled, but I do not have those results. That's fine.
So we're, we're potentially going back to the original site?
Depending on what the DEP says.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, they could...
And then, if they said, um, the area on the other side of the DPW barn is, is gonna cause you to have to do all sorts of permitting, then we'll go back to the other site.
That's what I'm thinking.
What is a fire chief, well, we, we don't know that yet.
Fire chief would like to have it on the non-public side of the storage building.
But that's not a deal breaker for him.
I don't think it is, no.
Okay.
So, it's one of these, I'm just trying to go through each level and understand, and we're getting information back, and we're starting to understand why certain things were done in Area 3 in the past, and eventually, we will get back to something that we understand, if we wanna put it here, these are the requirements.
Yep.
If we wanna put it here, these are the requirements. So that's the update on the fuel depot. The, um, street excavation materials pile, the board had asked, you know, well, what that, what will that roughly cost? that roughly cost? And it's our understanding that it will roughly cost $150,000.
I guess I'm from the, I'd like to see it gone, instead of just sitting there.
And so that's something that could go on the fall town meeting, because you need an appropriation. But the board, I just wanted to get back to you with what the amount was.
And that's why I want the testing, because I want to make sure.
And we need to, we need to know where future material will go, so it doesn't become-
Usually goes in a, in a bin and gets taken off, you know, within a month or so.
Yeah.
So you're having small quantities, small costs. Annie, did you have a question?
Yeah, in the correspondence, there was, the gentleman that you had been talking to had said something about, we would run the backhoe, they would, they would contract the trucking company.
Line up the trucking, exactly.
So the trucking, we have no trucks that would be able to, to transport that.
I don't know if we can, because we don't have the license, we don't have the hazardous materials certified people.
Okay.
My understanding is if you're having anything to do with that material, if it really is considered contaminated, then you have to have certain training and certain certifications to be part of the chain.
At the backhoe, you don't have to have that?
That's a very good question.
Well, that's what I was, I was like-
Because the truck driver doesn't necessarily have the train, the training, I mean, I'm assuming, but I don't know.
Well, and what he had said to me is, the concern is, if we put it in our truck and drive it away and then it drops, are we liable for anything that could happen? That, that made me go, oh, okay.
And, but that's, that's a great point about how they're saying, "Well, you would load it." But we heard from our fuel depot engineer, that you have to be Hazwarp or trained if you're going to be anywhere near that stuff.
I would assume that you would want to have somebody who knows what they're doing.
He's saying, he's saying that you have to be, so-
Can I ask one more follow-up question for that gentleman? If you touch the pile, because remember the guy said there's grass on it, and right now there's no, you know, it's not capped, but you do have grass. Once you touch that, is there a clock that starts?
I don't know, but I can find out.
If you've disturbed it.
Mm-hmm. I'll find out.
Thanks.
So that's the update on that. It is on the list for consideration for November.
We are trying to get this fuel depot as, before winter? What do we?
Yeah, that was the goal, yeah. So I'll get back to the DEP guy this week saying, "Hey, I'm just following up. I gave you this alternative. I showed him the test pit that we did."
Look at the beautiful grass that grows on it, must be good.
Must be great.
Fragmites too, that grows anywhere.
The next item is, just to follow up, when you were talking to the Board of Public Works, the question came up, "Does the town have the ability to use a betterment for the secondary treatment costs without having to charge people interest?" And the answer is no, unless the town goes for special legislation to get a waiver of the interest. Because remember, the cost of the borrowing is already coming to the town, because Gloucester is saying, "Here is the cost per year inclusive of the, of the cost of the money." And so the Board of Public Works was saying, "Well, you know, why tack on interest?" It's because the betterment law says that the town has to charge at least 2% interest, unless you get special dispensation, which would be special legislation. Is that something you want me to put on the town meeting list just for consideration? Or are you fine with making a 2%?
Special legislation from-
So that you can charge a betterment and not charge any interest.
But that's a state thing.
The, the state law on betterments requires that you charge at least 2%. You need special legislation.
Yeah, to be exempt.
So if we do charge that 2%, is it like the one we had with the first betterment, where it goes into an account to be used?
Yes, until, until the, until the capital improvement is paid off, yes.
Yeah.
So it would accrue. And so the benefit is, you're getting some money that will help the enterprise in the future. The drawback is, whoever doesn't pay the thing off all at once and finances it over time, is paying 2% interest on it.
Yeah.
And we, have we figured out exactly how much is that going to be?
Yeah, so we looked at it, and it's about $300,000 a year to the town of Essex.
To the town of Essex.
Because it's $6 million over 20 years, okay? I did, I did a sheet for you at a previous meeting that goes through all of the calculations. You probably don't have it with you now, but it does go through depending on the method of repayment. If you choose a betterment, plus-
And I'm looking for the individual person, what is the individual person?
It depends on what you choose. Like, I would refer to that sheet. If you choose a betterment plus taxes, it's one makeup. If you choose rate plus taxes, it's another. If you choose all three, it's another. So it all depends on, and I, and we already have it calendared for the Board of Public Works, I have it on my calendar, to come back in, which is what everyone said, as we get closer to it, how are we really going to finance it? And they have the information on the interest rate, because I got that right back to them after they asked it, all right? And then, the possible sign for donations to town departments and causes. I have set up with the town's electronic payment vendor, a link that we can send people to with a QR code and with a, from a statement on the town's website. So that's already set up, but it's not, no one's using it, because nobody knows what it is yet. In order to inform people, the board wanted to consider the development of a sign that would go in several public areas. And Alva has brought with her tonight, an example of a sign that she's recommending.
So I just felt like this was way too harsh, and so then I went looking. I'm not a marketing person, but I thought, okay, it needs to be softer. We don't want people, we just want somebody like, say a grandmother's there watching their kid play baseball and they see it and say, "Oh, I'll donate to this," you know, something like that. So I haven't shown this to anybody professional. I was thinking about showing it to somebody to see if they have any thoughts.
No, I agree. I mean, I'm not sure that this is the exact wording, but I don't know how we figure out the exact wording.
It's just going to be a QR code, it's not going to say donation.
No, I agree.
And I was trying to keep it again short, but again, I'm not a, I'm not a marketing person.
Who is? Who on Finance Committee, Economic Development Committee, one of the committees that would be good at coming up with a slogan that would get people interested besides just saying?
Well, I did reach out to Carmen Emery to see if she'd talk to me, and I was going to show it to her to see if she'd come up with something.
Yeah.
Or give direction. Annie, do you have any thoughts?
No.
I had some ideas for language, but I'm, you know, I'm no better than you.
Do you want to hear back, do you want to hear back from Carmen and then bring this up again?
Yeah, and I, and if you have, you know, if you have thoughts, again, it's just trying to, you want to keep it, you don't want to slap anybody with the word donation immediately.
No. No, let's, you know, we'll just critique what comes up.
Okay.
What is the total budget for these signs?
We haven't established that. I mean, a sign like that, a highway sign, I think they have the price right on there, it would be relatively-
But how many are you thinking of getting?
Well, the board hasn't determined which locations you want to put them in yet.
And then, you know, at the locations, how many you put, so we haven't gotten to that point, and we haven't gotten a price. If we did something like this, what kind of money this would be?
A lot more.
Yeah.
So, I guess we'll wait to see if you get input from Carmen. We can bring another version back to the next meeting.
Yes.
So at that, I am going to give reminders, and I do believe we have public here, so we'll see if we have public comment. So the planning board, the public hearing is on June 18th. Now, you have here 7:00 PM, but I thought she said 8 o'clock. I think the planning board stopped.
Well, there's two things going on that night.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You're talking about both the 44 main, which is the first-
Oh, okay, at 7:00 PM.
And, and you're talking about the continued OSRD.
All right. And then, the next regular meeting is the 23rd of June. And then, we'll move to public comment. I can't tell if anybody-
I have to comment, I don't know, there's someone online, I don't know if anyone-
Are you going online first or in room? How do I tell if somebody-
Just ask.
Does anybody online have a public comment?
Yes, I do, I may.
I'm hearing mumbling.
Can you come closer to your microphone, or turn up the gain on your microphone? I can't hear you.
My volume is up high.
It-
You can't hear?
No.
And I think, yeah, that speaker, that speaker is turned up plenty loud. Can you turn up the gain shown on the, the feed from the internet? It's at 100%?
Can you type the comment in the chat?
So, testing, one, two, three.
Let's, let's ask this. Could somebody, Jody, could you unmute and talk to us just to see if it's localized to this one person?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yeah, so it sounds like whoever's trying to speak to us, there's a localized problem with your system.
If you type it in the chat, go to the live audience.
Do they have the ability to chat?
Yeah, it will come up over there. I mean, we'd have to go read it.
All right, so whoever was trying to do a public comment, can you put your information in the chat? We're going to move to the floor and have public comment here, and then we will come back to you.
Okay, I'll see if that comes through.
Yep, it did.
Do I have to sign in first, or?
I thought it was Janet.
It was public comment.
Was that her?
Nina first. That'll be painful.
I still can't hear, understand it, can you?
Jody.
Well, ask the person who's just speaking.
Janet, were you just speaking?
I want to speak again and I'll see if I can hear. No, I wasn't.
No, it's back to a mumble.
You weren't, she wasn't.
Okay. Okay, so the chat wasn't, so we're going to stick with the people in room. Speak, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Nina McKinnon at One Lillan Farm Road. I am disclosing that I'm a member of the Town's Finance Committee, but I am speaking to all as a community member. I actually have two things before I get to the public comment. I wanted to add, it's from tonight's meeting. One is just the item you all heard just discussing with Grove Cottage, the possibility of Project Adventure, or whatever it was referred to. And a lease, I guess just thinking it would be really nice for the community to know of how the community members could use it. I'm not saying Project Adventure would be a great idea, but I didn't know that we were even thinking of entertaining ideas.
They're not going to do Project Adventure?
No, I know we're not doing it, but I think going forward, making sure, because as we can see, there's so many people here or online, when there's decisions made on a community art parcel or area that, as you've said, Alva, with the way people are looking at the Grove, more people want to be able to use assets in the community. The other was the tennis courts. Again, I had called in to the beginning of the meeting and then came over. Specifically, the tennis courts, and I have no vested interest as to its location. I do like playing tennis. But I just have to say, I am getting confused, because this was always a private project. For the 10-plus years I've lived here, I've always been hearing it was a private project, and it was going to be in the cost of 120 to 150,000. If in any way, it's becoming a public project, I think the community really needs to get more of a say, because the community does put money into the CPC fund. So it's just concerning that a project that was 120 to 150,000 is now being stated at 450 to 500. And I was at that DPW meeting when the tennis courts was brought up. It was the April 28th meeting, and it was shocking to hear that those tennis courts could now be almost a half million dollars. And the question at that meeting was simply stated, who's maintaining these said courts? Because it's certainly not in the DPW's purview. I would add that parking, I think, is an issue. Anyone can say it's not, but I even had Father Paul yesterday at Mass, at the end of it, say to all of us, "Please do not park in the middle of the municipal lot, you will get a ticket." And I left yesterday, 10:45, 10 of 11, and the lot was, the middle of the lot was totally empty, but a lot of the surrounding spaces were full. I thankfully didn't get a ticket. I admit, I didn't know the sign was there, but there was no baseball game. So we do have a parking issue here, so I would just sort of put that out. And then locate, I guess my last two things, specific to tennis court, is, I know Brendan, that you definitely said you could handle the project, and I appreciate that. I guess I would be really asking the Board of Selectmen if it's the best use of his time for Brendan to have to be helping with something that is supposed to be a private project. And then lastly, location. It, that area floods. It floods all the time. It's not a 100-year flood, a 200-year flood, or just when it's a full moon. And so, again, at that said meeting, in April, April 28th, I remember, I believe it was Chairman Nick Ellis saying, you know, to the tennis group, had they asked for a geotechnical survey or engineer to do their work. I know, Peter, you're into the environment, hydrologist, I would wonder if you have thoughts towards the feasibility, because I just, I know that location floods. So the reason I am here, and I realize it's late, I just wanted to bring up the topic of regionalization. And I know I had asked Brendan to forward an email to you probably two to four weeks ago. And I'm bringing it up just because it does come up in a lot of conversations to me. It's, it's just very concerning, because I feel it's a short sort of soundbite, but there's not a lot of facts behind it right now. At this time, just simply, I think the public sees that Essex has regionalized the schools with Manchester, you know, sewer and water with Gloucester. We know our 911 dispatch is with North Shore Regional 911 Center. Before the topic of regionalization, anything else comes up, I really hope that the OS will just get the current items in order. Manchester Essex Regional District, Essex is excited to rebuild the Essex Elementary School. The community of Essex has seen two buildings, two turf fields, three tennis courts installed in Manchester. A third of those costs paid by Essex. We need to see Essex Elementary rebuilt. It can serve as a hub for our community and for the generations to come. Essex Elementary rebuilt will hopefully be one, if not the highest priority for the town. Water sewer, you know, Gloucester provides the support to our sewer needs. In the coming years, Essex will be contributing our share to Gloucester's maintenance. In addition, Essex is waiting to learn what the price increase will be on the rates to cover these costs. A key word I'm using there is waiting. If the BOs is thinking regionalization or regionalizing will solve so many of our needs or issues, would the BOs commit to sharing the data outlining where costs will be saved, what true benefit the town will receive, outlining how a short-term fix will not become a long-term obstacle for the town to afford? Why am I bringing this up? Simply because Essex will always be the smallest partner at the table. While I would like to think another town wanting to partner with Essex is because of truly wanting to help, the reality is more likely that the other town needs something. Specific to Manchester, my concern is that at this time, adding another idea of regionalizing will muddy the discussions around EES. One of the main reasons the override passed was based on a looming thought that if it did not pass, then Manchester would not vote in supporting rebuilding EES. As someone that supported the override, and yes, that might surprise them, I supported it knowing that from the conversations and comments made from those I know in Manchester, this was a back of the sort of envelope, sort of, I don't want to say threat, but a back-of-the-envelope comment coming time and time again. So my ask to the Board of Selectmen is to hold off on the idea of regionalizing more of our town out of our town's control. Please do not allow a statement or statements to be made without facts to back it up. And please remember that the community of Essex wants us to stay an independent town. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. I did have one question. Nina made me think, and that is, with these tennis courts and using CPC money, would it be like, for who else to do a public forum?
Well, right now, you've, you've auth- Well, right now, you've, you've authorized the design to go forward, correct? If, if the private group says yes to the giving the money over for that purpose, right? You could have a public forum, but you've already voted to move forward, so.
Fine, thank you.
So I guess from a follow-up to that, so there's nothing the town community has to say if they want a sense of not having all the funds for the CPC monies to go to one project?
Well, the CPC money isn't going to be touched for the design because it can't be.
Okay.
The money that's coming in would be a gift and the selectmen could, could spend out of that account without appropriation by town meeting.
What was the cost that the Board of Selectmen approved?
$55,000.
We're going to, if, if it goes through, I guess it's $55,000 and there's $56,000 available.
Because I guess I would just say, it would be really, in the sense that nobody wants a repeat of other projects that have then been said went nowhere. It's, it's hard to think we would spend $55,000 to then, for a design that still might not go nowhere. We, every item is coming back that this could be.
Right. I mentioned that the success of the construction may be dependent on future meetings of the Community Preservation Committee and then town meeting. It's true. We don't know.
Is the Board of Selectmen even able to maybe revisit a vote to see maybe if, and I know the tennis people aren't here, so I'm not trying to say that to not be fair, but to revisit it when more people would have opportunity to make comment? I guess I would just say, I came because of other reasons, didn't realize the tennis courts were going to come up. But it just sort of shows how, I know we all say people need to get more involved and get information, but I would hate to think we're spending $50,000 on something that wouldn't go anywhere.
But wait until after we get the results.
Right. So you could do that. You could say tonight, Brendan, don't do anything, even if you get a green light, so that we can let more people know. Or you could stay with the vote you have now. That's your choice.
That's not me to ask for that, right? That's not me to ask you that.
No, I'm telling, I'm telling the board that if that's something, if they want to take what you just said, they can, but it's up to them.
So, you know, my feeling is I voted against it. So it would be to the.
I'd say leave it how it is.
Agreed.
Which, which means I'm still authorized to start the project.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want to go back to online or do you want me to comment?
No, just go and then we'll see what online wrote in the chat.
I want to start by thanking the Board of Selectmen for allowing me the opportunity to speak and make a public comment this evening. I have several comments prepared. I'm going to try to be strategic, but as I followed along with your meeting this evening, some other things popped into my head that I wasn't prepared for. And one of the comments was on the tennis courts, knowing that at 6:01 you had an update from the group. I didn't know there was going to be a vote, so I was hoping to make my public comment to potentially sway the board. But I'm still going to read it because I think that it has merit going forward. After reflecting back on my last six years, serving the town of Essex as a member of the Board of Selectmen, which has been both an honor and a privilege, my biggest takeaway is that every meeting, email, interaction, phone call, text, or conference is a building block of knowledge. In the last six years, these blocks equal thousands of hours of knowledge. My goal is to share some of that knowledge so that members can make informed decisions about topics with big impacts on the health and well-being of our town. The first one, so I'm going to actually go back to something you didn't vote on tonight, but it, it came to me as you were talking about the Grove Cottage. Annie mentioned that Project Adventure had reached out and talked about the possible lease, and then followed with, you know, she's been in the building and that we're not doing a good job of maintaining, which I have myself said in the past, that the town doesn't always do a great job of maintaining our assets, which is sad for us. And I realize that that comes back to financial constraints. But if we do, in fact, at some point in the future, consider leasing one of our properties to Project Adventure or anybody else, you may want to just consider something like a triple net lease because we were talking about the need for a tight tank. And my wheels start spinning thinking, well, who's going to maintain the tight tank? What happens if we have a, you know, it has issues? What if the lines freeze? What if all of these things, the what-ifs that build out? So consider a triple net lease so that it takes the town off the hook and doesn't just fall back to us to deal with those expenses. The next topic I want to bring up, I've heard rumblings about the request from the DPW about the stabilization account. So it's my understanding that a current member of the Board of Selectmen's been meeting with the Chair of the Board of Commissioners to discuss the stabilization account, that the commission requested be added to the Fall Town Meeting warrant. I just wanted to remind the board that the Board of Selectmen at that point was not opposed to the request. We just wanted more information. The board invited the Board of Public Works to our meeting to discuss the needs, as well as the stabilization fund, what it would be used for, and how it would be funded. Our invitation was declined, and the reason given was the Board of Public Works was too busy to meet with the Board of Selectmen. It's my recommendation that the entire Board of Selectmen be part of the conversations with the Board of Public Works and not just one member. This fund is something that will impact all water and sewer users, and all aspects and needs need to be well-vetted, especially the funding source, given that the rates are already slated to increase with our secondary water treatment facility in Gloucester, which is suggested to cost around $206 million in a total cost of $6 million to Essex at a tune of $300,000 over the next 20 years. The second comment that I had prepared for tonight was about tennis courts, which, like I said, is not going to seem as relevant, but I still want to bring it up. Tonight, you heard from a group of organizers for the Memorial Park Tennis Court Project. At your last meeting, the same group made a couple of comments that need some clarifying. The group stated that the Board of Public Works wants the tennis courts at Shepherd Memorial Park. That was reinforced again this evening, stating that they want it at Shepherd Memorial. It's important to be factual. The Board of Public Works manages Shepherd Memorial Park, and as such, was willing to allow the volunteer group to renovate the tennis courts. The same holds true for Centennial Grove. The Board of Selectmen manages Centennial Grove and was also happy to allow a volunteer group to build tennis courts and/or pickleball courts. However, neither the Board of Selectmen nor the Board of Public Works ever advocated for one location over the other. Also important to mention that the tennis court restoration project started with a group who did the fundraising. That group raised $110,000 between private donations and Community Preservation Committee funds. The cost of the project at that time was $120,000. We were $10,000 away from execution when a group stopped that effort by pushing for pickleball on the same courts. Fast forward, COVID hit, costs went up, and the project stalled. I want to remind the board that this is a volunteer effort, which includes the fundraising, project management, and construction of that project. At the last meeting, there was information provided that made it sound like the group wants to have the town take over this project. Please remember that we were very careful not to make this a municipal project. A municipal project will require a project manager, someone to write a scope of work, RFP, will be paying prevailing wage, and all of a sudden, a $120,000 project will be half a million dollars before you blink your eyes. Given the upcoming capital expenses, we need to be cautious on how we spend taxpayer dollars. Some examples of these projects looming are secondary water treatment facility, water sewer infrastructure, and a new Essex Elementary School building. My final comment this evening is in regards to 30 Apple Street. As the board may recall, and this goes back even before Selectmen Engahara's time on the board, this, this goes back to when myself, Selectmen Pippin, and Selectmen Spinney were sitting on the board. As the board will recall, in 2019, Mr. Neal was on the Board of Selectmen's agenda to present why the property located at 30 Apple Street was an extremely important property to the town of Essex. Mr. Neal's presentation outlined the importance of creating a road that would connect Apple Street to Landing Road for public safety. Mr. Neal outlined a list of potential hazards that faced the town, one of which included the need to loop the water main should either the Apple Street or the Landing Road Bridge fail. If the Landing Road Bridge fail, ever failed, we would not have access to plows, sanders, trash, recycling, and the like. At that time, Mr. Neal was so passionate about the need that he suggested that the Board of Selectmen take 30 Apple Street by eminent domain. The Board of Selectmen was not in favor because BJ Frye was still alive, and that would pose a potential problem. However, we did state at that time that when the opportunity presented itself and the property became available, we would pursue ownership because of the unanimously agreed upon importance of that property. Fast forward to September 2022, John Farrell of Caldwell Banker reached out to the town to let us know that he had a signed purchase and sales agreement for 30 Apple Street. As the Board of Selectmen knows, the town is given the right of first refusal to purchase any property that's held under 61A. The board tried to negotiate an agreement with the developer who had the signed PNS that would require them to install a through road and to loop the water main. The developer felt that this would devalue his project. The Board of Selectmen decided at that point, this property was so important and such an asset to the town that we would put it on the November 14th, 2022 Fall Town Meeting warrant. The townspeople also felt that the 11 and 1/2 acres was equally important and voted by two-thirds vote to purchase the property for $1.15 million. After the town took ownership, the Board of Selectmen held a posted public meeting to discuss possible uses for the land. We heard great ideas that included community gardens, leasing the land to a wildflower gardener, leasing the land to a farmer, over 55 housing, affordable housing. And the same developer that had the signed purchase and sales agreement actually came to our meeting to voice their continued interest in ownership of the property. But the biggest suggestion made at that meeting was the potential for our new elementary school. We paused all ideas until the future of EES was decided. There is a point to this history lesson on 30 Apple Street. It is my understanding that a current Board of Select member has made a promise to the residents of Apple Street that they would be putting 30 Apple Street back into 61A. There are so many reasons why this is inappropriate. No board member should ever make promises when it's not discussed by the entire board and voted on. Number two, the taxpayers voted on this parcel knowing from the discussion on town meeting floor that the goal was always to loop the water main and to build an access road. Number three, I guess the most disturbing thing for me is that two properties are being considered for EES, 12-story street and 30 Apple Street. But if promises of 61A on 30 Apple Street are being made, this means that there is actually zero interest or intent of actually considering Apple Street as a potential site. To sum that up, we are wasting time and money on a feasibility study for a property that isn't actually being considered. If the Board of Selectmen decides, as a board, that they are going to put 30 Apple Street under 61A restriction, please do not do it until the water loop and access road are addressed. And further, I've been told that there was a meeting with MECT to have them manage the 61A restriction. If this is true, I would expect that the Board of Selectmen would be looking to recover the $1.15 million that were used from sale of real estate funds and recovered by MECT if they were going to take ownership. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Janet, are you still online?
I am. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, she changed computers.
All right. I can hear you now, Janet.
You can hear me. Okay, great. Thank you. I wanted to respond to Jay Tetzloff's thoughtful comment a couple of hours ago now about the open space residential development that's under consideration. He makes a good point that 36 houses, maybe a million dollars each, is a concern for all of us residents for, for many reasons, including that we'd be facing net tax increases as a result of it, especially with such an oversized development. So I would only suggest that repealing the open space, the residential development bylaw, zoning bylaw, is the wrong focus. I say that because it's clear from the public hearings I've attended that if the OSRD is turned down, the developer would simply revert to the conventional plan to build 30 houses. So I'd say that the discussion, if, if there can be any discussion when it's private land, really needs to be about whether Essex can defend itself against such gigantic developments like this that aren't suited to our small town, and that they make the developer a lot of money, but leave us struggling to pay taxes and deal with the traffic and everything else. Maybe the discussion needs to be about a, an amendment to a subdivision law limiting the size or number of houses allowable generally in Essex. I don't know. But it's an excellent, excellent question that Jay started to pose. Who has the authority to say, no, this isn't good for Essex? But I just wanted to say that, that it's not only about the open space residential bylaw. It's really, you know, what, what do we do with projects of this inappropriate gigantic size? Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. That's it. Motion to adjourn? Alvos in favor?